I was quite surprised we're starting off at a very high number, just the rollover budget. So this just reflects no kind of review of that. And so I did send out an email earlier this week to all department heads to look at their budgets again. We're in a 4.2% rollover budget. That's not including any additional budget requests. Obviously, that's much a very high number to start with. So I've asked the staff to go through and look for opportunities for budget reductions and cost-saving opportunities. And so they're in a process of doing that now. They will be submitting to me by the end of this week their recommendations for reductions. I'm going to be pulling all that together and also putting together a first select and recommended budget to the Board of Selectmen in a couple of weeks. It'll also highlight some things that maybe are not really recurring things that should be in the budget that maybe we can pay for outside of the budget through appropriation or other matters. So this is kind of a document, I think, that helps understand the budgets and where they are. But you know, there has not been a scrub, so to speak, of really trying to keep the number down. I think we all recognize this is going to be a tough budget here because we have a lot, a huge hit on healthcare, unfortunately. And then also things like utilities, I mean, $100,000 increase because of the water rates have gone up. We have to pay for water for our fire hydrants, plus it's almost $100,000. It was $100,000 increase, right?
Ninety-one.
Yeah, $91,000 just to have the fire hydrant is active, right? So those are the types of things we kind of got nailed on. And then, like I said, healthcare is one of the big ones. So with that, though, obviously, these are the experts in their department. They can talk through their budgets. And then they do have requests that, you know, they want to explain why they think there's important things for their town operations to be successful. So with that, it's an opportunity to ask questions. I know a lot of people here are very experienced in those departments as well. Don't really have to ask questions to every... I'm sure the staff doesn't mind if they don't get asked a lot of questions. But obviously, if you have questions, ask them. So we were going to try to just go down the order here that's listed in the thing on the back of your... We've got a little schedule here in the back of your binder. And I think first up, and also pizza is coming at 6 o'clock. So there'll be some food coming, pizza and salad, if those people who are hungry are hungry. So I think the first is... First of all, are there any questions by, you know, board members or where we start? No? Okay, great. First off, I guess is Austin Ball, Director of Beach Recreation and Senior Services.
So I'm going to try to share my screen, but I need something so that I can... So I was just going to share every department. Okay. Scott, page 134. One is Beach and Rec, and then 143 is Senior. Oh, I'm good now.
What are you leading with?
Go Beach and Rec first. So I guess if you flip to 136, you'll see a couple of line items that have gone up. The wages for the ground staff, that's contractual.
It's a new contract that the Board of Selectmen just approved for this year, so the building in Brown's, you know.
And then wages, facility supervision, about three quarters of the way down the page. Increase in minimum wage went from 15 to 1570, $16 an hour. So that's a big, big hit that we really don't have control over. So, you know, this provides us with a full complement of beach staff, which everyone is concerned about. So we'll have full lifeguards, full gate guards. You know, we, you know, we pay our lifeguards, you know, a pretty competitive wage. They have, but they have options. They are, you know, a very needed commodity throughout the state. And we have an asset, you know, a mile from us. They have uber local options of where to go. So I put out, you know, a note to the guards a couple of weeks ago and had a great response from people coming back, which is very helpful, as well as the gate guards and facility monitor staff. A lot of them will be returning and as always, we hire some new folks and then you keep that cycle going. Be happy to answer any...
Any questions?
Questions, concerns?
I mean, I think really there's no major changes in terms of the operations of the department, right? It's pretty much... And then additional, did you have additional requests?
There was one in there for when Academy opens. We need a, like a supervisory position over there. So there was a recreation superintendent for that. So obviously, we won't need the full amount this coming budget season. But in order to lessen the blow come following year, we put, I believe it's a half or a quarter.
It is a quarter.
A quarter?
Yeah.
Thank you. Of the, of that position to start, you know, three quarters of the way through the fiscal year.
And this was a position that was presented as part of the original budget for Academy. The thought was, and I did suggest this, I said, well, let's try to ease into it because you're going to need somebody to... You can't just have the building open. You need to have a staff to kind of bring it up. So the thought was doing a quarter, you know, hiring the person like in the third or fourth quarter of the end of fiscal year to start. Assuming that Academy is going to be opening in 2025.
Yeah, and we'll know more, you know, as we proceed through the fiscal year next year, what the status of the building is and if it's, you know, still on track open accordingly. And then we could adjust if needed.
What's upon time, grounds maintenance was all one department, wasn't it? All reported in the same...
Grounds and Public Works?
Yeah.
Once, no, grounds used to be under facilities. Yeah, and then I pulled it out of facilities and put it under Beach and Rec. Public Works has always been separate.
Do we have any duplication, this, I don't expect you to have any of this, between what the school district does for grounds maintenance and what the town does?
Well, we do the grounds maintenance. So all of the ball fields, we do all of that.
So is Public Works just roads?
Yes.
And that's the sweat? So you've got everything green and they've got everything paved?
Pretty much. We do, we do some plowing up north in the side streets and downtown and buildings, but yeah, pretty much.
The school district, though, does, I think, have landscaping services as well as plowing. So if that is contracted out, that's been a, I've talked about this many times with Billy, but it's something in the future that we can always discuss. But there was a very strong feeling that, you know, you're handling athletic fields, but like, you know, the hedges around hand high. I think he has a outside group coming, right? And do all that, and plowing. It's all handled through the school district.
So is the town fleet of plows, this is someone, not suited for plowing the parking lots of the schools?
It is not that. I think it's more of a prioritization and it's the way it's been done, so.
Maybe we should, we should put a pin in that?
Yeah, we've talked about it in the past and there was a lot of resistance, to be honest, to try to do that, but it's worth bringing up.
There's going to be a lot of resistance to this increase too.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So any natural synergies and shared resources, I think, we should be working pretty hard on?
I mean, I know there was some, like, when I first came in, I was kind of like, what? Like, it doesn't make any sense, but there was a rationale behind it. I know we talked about it, I talked about it with Greece, actually, a while back, and it just kind of stayed the way it is.
Schools wouldn't be able to get opened up.
In the time frame.
So you'd actually have to hire more town school people to do this.
Yeah, yeah, it was kind of like, I just remember they, they really strongly thought you had to have this separate because there's the...
Yeah, Billy's getting promoted. And he did text me saying that Public Works does help schools with sweeping parking lots and the driveways. So it's kind of like a team effort.
Team effort for everybody. But he has an outside vendor to do the parking lots, yeah. And he does, and the mowing and the groundskeeping kind of stuff around the school buildings. And we can talk to Bill now, but I know this has been, why do we flag this as a further discussion? Because I, I went down this path a little bit when I came, but I know they felt very strongly that it really needed to be handled this way, so.
Schools have always been private contracts.
Yeah.
I agree with what Sam was saying earlier. You know, if, if we, if my department or Public Works does the schools and that takes away from the roads and other town buildings at that time, which wouldn't get done in order to get the schools open on time.
A lot to do at once.
Everybody wants it now.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you gotta get, you gotta get all those buildings. Although we are going to have fewer locations, so it might be worth just thinking about again, too. Because now we've got only two locations, well, no, not the new school, we have three locations. But we'll look into that a little bit again. Any other questions from Austin on Beach and Rec?
I can make just two comments. If you want to, Austin, did you find some savings to request to cover that increase? I'll use a reduction, almost half wages. And then just a common theme, there are 288 days in this fiscal year, so hours, 288 hours. So there's an extra day. So when you have an hourly employee, there's an extra day that's added from last year to this year. So you'll see that as we go through.
Leave you.
I know, this year's leap year, but when we count the days for next year, it comes to 288.
Wait, this is...
Because that makes sense.
I think it's because of the weekend, like when you count it, workdays, you gain a work day. So yeah, so if that comes up.
Like five of us counted.
Yeah, we all, yeah. Like everybody took a verbal check. Because I said the same thing, I'm like, the leap year is this year. So anyway, just saying. Next, senior.
So Senior Services, page 142. And I guess if you flip to 143, that's the actual budget page. You'll see that all of the proposed increases are strictly salary-based. Except for the printed binding, that's our newsletter. So the postage goes up every year and already, and we don't, we don't get, we're not privy to when or how much the increase is going to be for postage. It just sort of gets sprung on you. And it just went up a couple of months ago, too. But we know it's gone up every year. You know, it's pennies that it goes up, but it still adds up when you're sending 1,800 of these a month. Adds up.
Has there ever been any conversation about just electronic newsletters as opposed to...
We do that as well. And every year, a couple of times a year, we put out in the newsletter, if you'd like to receive this electronically, please let us know. We ask people when they initially come in. So exactly, so as you and everyone else likes to be able to hold it, look at it, you know, put it down, pick it back up again. Yeah, we try. We get a few every year, but then the additional people who come in are new. It's, yeah, sick of all...
Generational thing, too.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're right, Penny. Years as we go on, years, people will agree to get electronic. Not yet.
Talk of the eighties.
Awesome. The bus driver wages went up 12%. First one.
That was the hourly rate.
That was the hourly rate.
Last year, we had it low. Now it's about $20.
That's good.
So you could have reached that.
Different bus drivers. He doesn't pay enough for me to drive his bus.
Exactly. So we don't pay enough and we're in constant... Again, bus drivers, as you see every year, you know, in May, June, or June, sorry, August, when people are going back to school. In September, the lack of bus drivers in the state. We aren't competitive like a school bus rate would be. You know, this benefits the working for the town, obviously. But we try to stay as competitive as we can so we can keep a full squad of drivers going.
Okay, any other questions? And obviously, if you, you know, you can email and get the details and stuff.
There is an additional budget request for senior.
So you've got, what, a quarter of a person in for the...
Beach and, yeah.
Do you have any other monies for operating heat, light, programming, advertising?
Other, so heat and light and all the, all of those things won't come out of the Beach and Rec budget. That'll be facilities. Is there something in there?
No. It won't be until after this fiscal year. This is just to get the staffing to start organizing the building opening and the programming and all that. So the building, I think, you know, best case is going to be the end of 2025. So if this fiscal year ends, you're turning it to 2025.
The additional budget request for $13,000. This was for additional to front desk coverage?
Right, okay, thank you. So right now, at Senior Services, we only have, we've only ever had, front desk coverage from 8:30 to 1:30 every day. So that leaves us two and a half hours of an empty spot at the Senior Center. And if you've been there recently or in the past couple of years, you'll know that that front desk area is an extremely busy position. And pulling another staff member for those two and a half hours, whether it's Heather or Ellie away from doing what they should be doing as their job makes it extremely difficult. And, you know, we've, I've asked for this a few years, well, probably another five years going. And it just never, never seems to fit, but... It's, it's a very important position that we have at Senior Center. And between the phone calls, the registrations, just the questions people have when they come to the desk, it's hard to manage those hours when we don't have somebody there with the two staff that are in the building. And Simon, Heather, you know, is constantly meeting with folks, doing energy and rent rebates and applications and sometimes has to keep her door open when it's, you know, a pretty private conversation just to see if people are coming to the front desk. It would be, you know, extremely helpful to the day-to-day work at the Senior Center if we were able to have this in.
So awesome. So you're calling, for example, Heather White to cover, and she's a 40 dollar an hour worker as compared to the person who offers receptionist. Her time may probably be better spent doing what she says to be done.
I like that she has to leave her door open for her private conversation to do that.
It's just, that's what it comes to in order to, to receive people approach the desk. And she has to say, hang on one second, go out to the front desk and answer the phone. It's tough.
Okay. That's it for Austin, and feel free to email him with additional questions. Keep it moving.
Thanks, everybody.
I'm sorry, I'm ignoring the online people. Any questions online for Austin?
No questions here.
He's already out of the room. He ran.
I'm sorry, I'm not being sensitive enough to the...
John, I was on my way.
I'm sorry, I'm not. Don't worry, I'm good.
If you'll be, yell out, guys, if we're ignoring you, apologize. Yeah, the card's on too, so.
Yeah, maybe raise your hand if you have a question, just so we see it.
Yeah, because like you guys are little boxes. We don't even see you right now.
Raise our hand, you got it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, economic development. We're not going to do that anymore. We kind of moved some of those monies over to land use, so we'll cover it. So if you go right to facilities.
Yeah.
To this agenda.
Page 94. Scott.
Thank you.
Billy should be on.
Yeah.
Billy's up.
Yep.
Billy, you're up.
I'm up. I'm ready.
Really, Billy?
Maybe we need to Peter.
I know that Peter's on too. So maybe we should put Peter up and I should introduce him for those that haven't met him yet. Our, I prepared the budget. Peter will be stuck with it once he will prove it. I have to say that, you know, we increased the water. I heard you already talking about that. You know, the water company told us what the increase was going to, planning on being. We put that in. Our utilities, gas is flat and the electricity is up 4%. Those are the only increases other than, that's it. Other than, excuse me, wages. I don't do the wages. I, I'm sure there's, well, in the town side, there's only my position and the construction manager and an administrative person. So I assume they went up some modest percent, but I didn't put that in. And I'm sure that the HR department could help me out with that.
And I will say on the electricity, we do hedge our electricity. We're really lucky to have some low prices and then rolling off of that contract and going into another one for next year. So that's why you see a little bit of a bump, yeah, going into the new contract.
I calculated the increase in the contract price and the amount of electricity that we use. And I added that in, as well as I estimated the, with our help of our consultant, I estimated what we, we have guestimated for the ever-source charges.
And I think that, you know, with all the new buildings coming on, 2025 is going to be, you know, this will be fine through this fiscal year, but the next fiscal year, there's going to be a lot of, you know, buildings rolling on and rolling off. And we weren't really able to do as good a job on the contracts because of this big transition year. So, you know, so hopefully we won't see...
I agree. So everyone can see Peter Anderson. He has started already and he is taking my place. I wish him a lot of luck. I think he's already been on board a couple of weeks and already been a big help. So I just wanted to introduce him in case everybody didn't know who he was.
Welcome, Peter.
Hi, how are you? Honored to be here. Welcome. Thank you.
Is that better or not?
I mean, well, do we, do we need the on-screen or do people... As a budget, that way at least we can have everybody on the screen. Do, are you guys needing the on-screen sharing of the budget or is it...
I can see it. We can see it. I can see it. Peter, can you see it?
We need to, because otherwise...
Yes, I can see it.
And then we can see the whole gallery of people.
You don't have, you don't have to have it on my account. I have it in front of me as well on paper.
What about board members?
Board members.
Oh, we can see it.
I have my binder with me. I'm good.
Okay, okay. I'll stop sharing then and then just yell if you need me to share something.
I can see it. I have one in front of me anyway.
You have your own, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a little better.
I do. Thank you.
All right. Okay, great. So I don't know if there's any other questions on that. It's utilities and, you know, it's pretty much in some way or so. So if everybody's good, we can move on to the highest department, which is always a problem.
Always a problem. Yes, we heard you earlier, you're very argumentative to work with. We are, we are trouble.
Cutting costs with budget tabs.
Yeah, a lot are on in that department.
You're saving a ton of money.
Except, so page 82 is the assessor's office. They're pretty busy tonight, so I gave Orly out. She doesn't have any additional requests. We're working on finalizing the grant list of a student state by the end of the month. So she really had, she was very appreciative, not that she didn't want to come and join us. She was very appreciative that I gave her the evidence. So on page 82, I think the only thing, salaries off the staff, that's simply COLA and STEP increases for new employees that we have that are going through the STEP program. And then the increase in the data processing, that is maintenance. It's basically QDS, which is our tax bill, billing side vision, which is our appraisal software. And the NADA or vehicle, they were all contractual increases. To the budget and not consider an additional budget request. It's a pretty, pretty straightforward budget. So... Okay.
Okay, so next, your favorite department, page 71, the finance office. 71. So, so I think you all know that the finance office is shared between the town and the Board of Ed. So what you see on page 71, town share of the finance office, you see an increase of $42,000. And that is a position that was in the selectmen's office for the grant administrator, that we moved all of that money. So when we go to the selectmen's office, you'll see a reduction. So that's really not an increase in the overall budget. We're just shifting it over. We do have an open position. We did advertise. We didn't get quite what we wanted. And part of the problem is we're so busy that we can't even find the time to try to find somebody to help us. So we didn't go back out yet. And we are revisiting. We've changed that position a few times. We were at the grants. Now we have lovely Kristen who took over some of the grant. It was a communal position that we...
And I know you've been now kind of having that spread out to different staff.
We've been, yeah, and then because Kristen and other staff in my office has taken on responsibilities, we were hoping to find an accountant, just a staff accountant. And like I said, we posted, we didn't find what we needed. So we're going to revisit. We may post again. We may look at other options on how we can cover some of these gaps.
This is something we'll deal with the next couple of weeks.
Yep. Questions on finance? Thanks. Okay, the risk, we're not going, now that we don't have a risk manager anymore. A lot of those that were shifted over to HR.
Yeah, so HR is now handling risk management. Lucky, sir.
Yes.
That was a position for Lauren, Lauren Ryan said, had stepped in and...
So then the last department before we get to HR is not, last but not least, tax collector's office. And by the way, I did give her an out, too, but she wanted to cut and spend five bucks.
I'm actually running out after this to go see my niece's concert, so I will miss the pizza.
So page 86, Scott.
Is it 86 or 87?
That's the, people are on 86.
Okay. Happy New Year, everyone. So the tax office has no additional budget request for this year. Overall, we have an increase of $9,802, $4,799. But that increase is for operating accounts and that is due for, due to contractual increases. You will see the contractual increases under data processing and office supplies. The data processing contractual increases for mailing and printing services. And the office supplies contractual increases is for postage. And this is for reviewing our tax bills and legal notices, which is required by Connecticut State statute. Everything is pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I appreciate you coming in. I was kind of like a layup.
So this is your second year as tax collector?
Yes, okay. I'm going back to the eight years here.
I'm going back to eight years here.
You're in the finance office. Yeah, sweetie, I'm here.
No questions for me?
So, one, so we bumped your overtime.
No, the overtime should be the same.
No, no, so I'm sorry, the prior year.
That was the actual, that was charged to the.
Yeah.
But honestly, we, the budget stayed the same. The budget has stayed the same, but in 23, we only spent a thousand.
This is a great segue into actual versus forecast numbers, which is a line that is always missing when we go through this process.
And you have to remember with our department too, we've had a lot of staff changes.
So my question was gonna be, is it adequate? Is the, is the 5,200 adequate?
I don't know. I haven't looked at the act. Kristen, you have the actual number?
The actual is a thousand dollars. In 23, but the problem is this year, we only have half the year. You know, so that's her last full complete 22, 23 fiscal year. So we'd have to look at the year-to-date to see where we are this year, but.
And I think the staffing changes with.
It was Christina's point now, we have a new.
I'm on a second, second assistant. My first assistant left. So I think all that came into play with a lot of, a lot of the budget stuff. Even the staff development line was affected by that also. We had, I think we had a little left over because of the change.
Yeah, so probably this year, we've spent $675 in overtime.
So it appear to be adequate?
Yes.
Well, potentially even.
Yeah, I think, I think that after this year, I'll have a better picture of everything because Brenda will be here full year in March. And then, and I've been here, so now it's, it's not gonna be where there's so many different changes.
Fill it out with a new assistant. It could maybe have a potential.
Like 52 still seems kinda high, but.
Well, it's for overtime for the assistant position and for the summer help this summer. And that's huge. Yeah, when it, when the first bills go out. But I think, you know, we've talked about in the past, like, you know, also covering, like, if you guys are at a training or something like that, do you have temporary help or do you just close the office? Those are kind of discussions we've had at times too. So, like Jean helps a lot over the summer. Yeah, and we did try to use more. That was the other thing I've been doing is trying to use internal resources more to cover for other departments. So that's probably some of it. You didn't have to.
And Kristen helped a lot.
Yeah. But fair point, you know, things to look at and if we look at like what's been spent over the last couple of years and, you know, so. Yeah, yeah, but I think that I'll better deserve that once we have a full year and all the same staff.
Right, I think to be fair, Christina would like a year with Brenda, both of them on. And I do think perhaps next year we would have a savings. I mean, Brenda is also a tax planner, serves like tax planner. So they have a good, strong office now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the concert.
Thank you.
All righty, page 67, HR. Hi, Jean.
Hi.
Page 68 is Deborah's HR budget.
Can I just ask for a quick, who is planning on having, just to make sure we never do not.
No, you can either. I just wanna know, like. We need to make you happy more members out. So we got one, two, you guys.
Nine, 10, 11.
We ordered three large pies, six slices and a half green salad.
Yeah, good. We should be good. Okay, I just couldn't remember. I was like looking around. We have a lot of bodies here.
You're up, Deb.
Okay, I have no additional budget requests. And I was able to reduce two of the budgets now that this is my second budget cycle here with the town. So I was able to reduce two of them.
So the budget book reads like there was a 17% increase in salary? Is that to one person?
That is a director's salary.
Yeah, yeah.
We shifted the risks.
And we got a risk management to the department. Work went over, the risk manager went over to the director of HR and so there was a grade increase. And then yes, to director. It's the legal notices. That was something we're, because we're not required to do. Yeah, for some reason we had a budget for that. There might have been an requirement for that you had to close positions or something.
Yeah, you don't have to do that.
And then also for the staff development, which is our tuition line. So if any of our employees are using tuition reimbursement, we were able to take a better look at that based on the number of employees that are using that. And so that's why we're able at this time to reduce that number. It may change if we have a lot more employees that wanna participate in that. But at this time, we feel very comfortable in reducing that so that we have some additional savings there.
Does it handle? Yeah, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the explanation on the 17% increase in salary. That's due to.
Yeah, we had a rate, a great increase to a director of HR this last year, plus additional responsibilities for risk management have been put into that department that worked there.
Okay, thank you.
So Stacy, consistent with going through this all those years ago, when we were seeing these years of big increases because of the steps, are we through the curve now? Would we expect that, that the rate of increase would settle to a normal rate?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, you're still gonna have certain positions because you have people coming in that some come in step one or step two.
Right.
But there was that big adjustment where everybody, you know, you had like the alliance share, that kinda ended.
Yeah, we had some pretty funky years there.
Now it's gonna be the new hires, the new, because we had some people come in, you know, and then they're moving up because they're, you know, experienced level or whatever. So, you know, as long as we have that kinda compensation or.
Yeah, and we tried to hire at like a three or four to give somebody the opportunity to learn the job. Get, you know, get up to that level. So in when we budget for new position, if it's vacant, I think we tend to budget at step three, hoping that, you know, we can get someone in at the lower, but you will see that increase in it.
So Deborah, thank you for making those budget assumptions and taking these as two line items.
Okay. Moving on to town operations.
So with emergency management, we're gonna do that with fire marshal same time. So 123 is emergency management. 23, emergency man. Really, there's no change. There's really nothing.
Yeah, they increased that budget.
Well, let's move on.
Okay.
And then page 121 is.
The increase there I asked for is we have an asset inventory management system or software, we're actually changing vendors because vending restrictions, it's very difficult to get that out. It's like I can't even run a report to say I'm expecting it. It's crazy, you know? And it's the full part department choosing as well. So with the asset inventory, we have to put the expiration dates for all of our PPE and stuff like that, you know, to keep track of it. It also gives the, way into their inventory.
So that's an additional budget request? So it's not on page 121. That's what was built in.
Okay.
And the initial budget request should say 6,000.
167.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
So that, that, this is the thing though, that we had originally funded through ARPA, right? But then it wasn't clear what was there.
$15,000 a lot in ARPA.
Yeah.
And we're having difficulties finding a good vendor to do this. Finally, we got this one company. So the money was kinda tracked at that ARPA. So.
But now you know exactly what you want.
Yes.
Will this be a volifying or ARPA, I think, like the veterinary model? Maybe this is when we can look at it, funding appropriately again, you know?
Is this the one, is this the annual amount of 6,000?
So yes, we go up annually.
Oh, this is in our house, it's a subscription basis.
Yes, we increased the vacant time.
Oh, is it five?
Yeah. Can you buy a two-year contract? And give it a discount?
We gave it to, but I'm just hoping we could.
Well, no, I'm saying if we were to do ARPA, we could buy like a three-year discounted, three-year contract or something. But, you know, so it's not built into the budget. I'll, I'll slide over there. We can talk about that later.
I could, I could point out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, what do you wanna do next?
Building? 131, Benny on there, Jean? Benny, you're muted.
Unmuted now.
There he is. Welcome, Benny.
How's it going?
Welcome.
You look relaxed.
I'm pretty much chilling, yeah.
Yeah, so Benny actually requested additional requests. Did they get into the book? You know, print on the bottom, help with this. Sorry, we need to talk about these part-time.
Part-time, I mean, we had conversations with Benny about this, several, you know, reasons that it couldn't get submitted by the end of this year. You know, with a little uncertainty, but I think, you know, in a way he wanted to still submit the request to the, to the boards. And I think we were talking, he was requesting a part-time position. What was the dollar amount?
So if it was, if it was, it was 20 hours a week, it'd be about 42,000 and if it was 29 hours, it'd be somewhere around 6,400.
Yeah, so maybe what we'll do is send mail around to everybody just with the description and the dollar amount about that. That's not in your books. You know, I think Benny talked a lot about productivity. We're, you know, the number of permits that go through our office. So I don't know if you wanna talk, why you think more assistance is needed and.
I mean, last year we processed just short of 4,000 permits. You know, it's only Sarah and myself. We do a ton of inspections. We're extremely busy. You know, 29 hours would be better, but I could get away with 20 presently. Tim Lund is, is taking the class up in, up in Hartford. And without a doubt, he'll pass. There's not a question about that. But in the same token, if I'm taking Tim and using him part-time, who's gonna, you know, it can't come out of the fire marshal's budget. It's gotta come out of the building budget. And we don't, you know, right now I only have $2,000 a year budgeted as an overtime line for outside help or an outside inspections. You know, I mean, the pace that we're on is, you know, pretty extensive. You know, I showed, you know, I've showed a quick spreadsheet I put together. Where I was averaging almost 14 inspections a day all of last year. Nobody does that many. So the help would be, you know, no, my health is not gonna be a factor, but nobody can keep that pace up. Income-wise, now we've been 600-plus. We'll be 600-plus this year. We're like 660 last year, like 860 the year before. So we have more than enough income to be able to provide this position. I'm gonna be trying to ease the burden part of it.
And so the other thing is to, there's really, there's no redundancy. If me had been sick, we had kinda scrambled to get things covered and it's, it was kind of a monumental task. Wasn't easy to get things done.
Yeah, we don't really, yeah, we don't, we never had redundancy, but I never really had a heart attack before either, so. But now I got it, now I got a transplant. I got a new ticker and I'm two steps ahead of the curve, the doctor says, so. Way, way ahead of schedule.
Well, I think though that, you know, we found over the last two to three years, we've had a couple of incidences where we've been.
Yes.
Regulatory, regulatory obligations, when you have, the wall can't stop because an employee has a health issue. So, you know, some towns, they have redundancy built in. We try to, you know, use resources from other towns and that's what we've been doing. We have somebody part-time, right, that's been coming in and handling inspections. But so we've been just trying to make sure that there's, you know, cross-training or redundancy built into the system. I, I will say the volume, you know, that goes through the billing department here is quite significant. Madison is a busy place and people put a lot, do a lot of home improvements. Especially the last, you know, three or, three or four years with the real estate market being lifted, so.
Unfortunately, we didn't get a hold with her, so there's no fraud. Some people are still building.
Yeah, so it's expensive.
Stacy, what are the revenues coming in?
Yeah, as you're saying, it's like 600,000.
But so, so just so you all know, so Tim is my deputy partner. So we use him to help Benny uncover and we're gonna have to increase the hours my inspectors, because we still have the statutory requirements to get all these existing places inspected as well. You know, we did over 380 inspections just with gas, gas inspections and open burning and stuff like that previously, not this last, this year. I think right now we're about 250 so far. And that doesn't include our just, you know, with the other software, it's very difficult to get out. I can't get a summary of proper inspections if we do because it lists everything by violation. So if one property has five violations on it, it says we inspected it five times. It's just, software is just horrible. Probably should never went when it, they sold us billings.
The fire marshal's office did almost 528 inspections last year for my department alone. And for gas.
So, uh, so, so it is busy, you know, the volume is there. Uh. And we are, we are maintaining with the existing. And I know a couple of years ago I asked for an increase for inspectors, but we are maintaining. Uh, you know, Tim's been actually doing a good job. Uh. Coordinating them and getting them out and. Ask for markets, we're not quite caught up, but we're not as bad as we. Uh, we, we have all the. The height, the height is target. Places done, which is, you know, all the places where people sleep, uh, you know, something like that, those are all up to, up to date. There is. Quite a few more, you know, apartment buildings coming up, now we got seven more units of that, uh, cottage road we're gonna have to inspect annually, uh, as well, so. As this low-income housing keeps coming in, it's just more work for us. Um, but so. That's kind of where we're at.
So we get a recommendation on what the number is?
I, I'll be submitting a recommendation on all this, uh, taking into account Benny's request and his hand.
We do our, our initials, we'll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but it's good to asterisk, asterisk it with the revenue offset.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, so Matt, you had asked, in fiscal year twenty-two, this was COVID, we budgeted four hundred fifty, we got in eight hundred eighty-two, so that year was phenomenal. Um, fiscal year twenty-three, we bumped the budget up to five hundred, we got in five ninety-three. And today it's still at five hundred for fiscal year twenty-four. And we already got in three hundred and eighty thousand.
That's not guaranteed.
It's pretty consistent over the years, it really is always over.
It's impressive. I sit there and I always say, this has got, the bubble's gotta stop, right, but we'll stay, you know, invested, but it's just, it's been, people are, you know, constantly operating in this town.
It's very consistent.
It's very consistent, yeah.
Cheaper to improve your home than it is to sell your home.
Right? Well, starting in March, I talked to a Realtor today at lunch, and she said there's like no inventory right now, so everybody's just saying, okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know, Tim Mack has got applications in to build seven houses. So. You know, exactly, the inventory's going up.
Yeah, I mean, we have a number of, you know, projects that will be coming down the pipeline too, that will be added to.
Yeah, some big commercial projects coming up down the road.
Yeah. So I think we'll come up with a recommendation on how to address all this, um, I'll send out an email just so you know what his request had been and, and the dollar. So kind of, it was a timing issue, obviously, with all that's going on with him personally, and so it just didn't get it into the, into the packet, so. Uh, but we will, uh, we'll be coming back on a recommendation.
Okay. Good. Um, help, page one forty-five.
Good to see you, Ben.
Me too, you guys.
Thank you.
Evening.
One forty-six is Trent's budget, and then he does have an additional budget request.
Ready?
Good evening, guys, uh, just wanna, just a quick disclaimer, if we get yelling and crying, it's because. I'm beside the, uh, my co-pilot, the baby here, so, um, just, uh, bear, bear with me, if it gets loud, I'll just, I'll just mute. Sammy, um, you okay if I take it away?
Good.
Yeah, so, um, everything in the operational budget pretty much is a status quo, with the exception of our household hazardous waste account, um. Peggy signed their, the resolution for this program that the town has been in for more than twenty years. And really, the increase is due to, it's a contractual increase due, due to the inflation and cost of recycling has gone up. And I know some, some of you as board members, I know there's over five hundred residents that actually partake in this event that we would do. Uh, one, one day in October, we'll have a satellite collection for household hazardous waste, paints, oils, um, antifreeze, uh, whatever the case may be. And then there's also another component to that program, which is New Haven, ninety Sergeant Drive, and that's where we get to see the amount of users that the town has, so. The town signed into this, to this program, and it allowed for residents of Madison to go to New Haven throughout the year. Um, and dispose of their household hazardous waste. Now, we, since twenty, well, for, sorry. Um, we, we've since allowed for every other week, I mean, every other year, we would hold a household hazardous waste event, it used to be at Hammond Asset. Now it's at the town garage, and last year, if you recall, um, we didn't extend the budget for this, and I think Peggy's office got a lot of calls about it. So this is just the, the dollar amount that's gonna suffice to cover the one satellite day and then routine, uh, usage from our households in Madison.
Fifteen thousand in additional budget that was reported to on page. One sixty-seven.
Yeah, so just, just so you know, it doesn't matter where person goes to recycle, they take, they take the person's address, then it gets charged back to the town, so even if Guilford had a satellite day, if Madison people went over there. They would, Madison would get charged for it, same thing with Guil, with Guilford people come to Madison satellite day.
So we're just giving Guilford addresses.
Yeah. I'm sure they'd ask for a license or something.
Um, I think when we talked about this before, we were all pretty philosophically aligned with making sure this happened.
Yeah.
I mean, the cost is the cost, I think the, the town, you know, needs to walk the walk on these types of things.
And if you recall, we've been asking for special programs since the last couple of years to cover the extra thing, that's why we didn't do it last year, so there's no requests this year. So, um.
Yeah, it's, and it's also unpredictable, because you don't know how many people are gonna show up, right, so it's every year's a little bit of a, uh. I, I will say we're looking at other ways, this might be something we could pull out through a different funding mechanism, that'll be part of the recommendation, you know, we'll figure it out, but I do think, to Bruce's point, we need to figure out, we gotta offer it, we gotta enable it, so.
Do we, do we have to use? Regional water authority? Could we use a private company is? Is, is there?
I don't know, it might be more, use private.
It might be, but it might be worth looking into.
We could, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. But I know all the towns, everybody goes to South Central.
Oh, so this is, is this fifteen thousand just for that satellite?
This is the one day.
One day.
So it doesn't have anything to do with the cost that we pay for going to New Haven, dropping off? Yes, or any.
That twenty-two thousand seems to be a big cost.
Amazing how expensive it is, so, I mean, I was kind of stunned that, you know, and people use it, we got, when we didn't have one, it's.
Yes, there was a lot of.
A lot of calls, so, um, you know, just, why aren't we offering this, we should be encouraging people to dispose of these things properly, so.
Yes. Do it.
Yeah.
From May through October.
Yeah, I don't know if like there's a, uh, you know, this people gather up and they wait for it, come in and.
Killing my car, bring five cans of paint.
Really?
I've done it. Oh, wow. Should you sleep in the parking lot in the middle of the night?
Derry Hill, I heard.
I just remember you stayed with everywhere.
Okay, uh, so, any other questions for Trent? No. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
Yeah.
Land use is next, page one twenty-seven. That's Erin, Erin.
That was trying to privacy, maybe. She was.
That's a brilliant move.
It worked, yeah.
Highly recommend, I'm bringing a puppy next year.
It's trying to distract you.
Hey, everybody.
Hey.
Thank you, um. Okay, so I have some minor, um, changes to our budget, some of it was restructuring as, um. Under, um, the land use department, I had, um, a few commissions that had their own separate budgets, um, specifically Historic District Commission. Uh, where they covered, uh, legal notice fees and any of their supplies and clerking, um, minute-taking, uh, expenses. I also had the Conservation Commission, uh, that had a, uh, an individual budget that, um. Predominantly was for, uh, summer internships and other, um, necessary supplies. Um, the Economic Development Commission also had, uh, their own, uh, separate account. Um, that was used for various expenses, um, that was, um, once, uh, EDC merged away from, uh, or separated from land use. Um, that was under, uh, Sherry's budget previously. We looked, um, I had some, uh, in discussions with Peggy and some other, um, land use-related boards, had requested, um, their own budgets as well. Um, mostly just support fees in case there was educational outreach, um, specifically the bike ped committee had, um, initiated this request, so we. Um, in conversation with Peggy and, um, Stacy, looked at this to, um, dissolve some of those individual commission budgets. And just create one shared, uh, commissioner resource, uh, line item, uh, within the land use budget, where they would then come directly to me. Um, requesting, you know, uh, and they'll split the money as needed. Uh, and so that's, that's one major change that you'll see, and that line item is fifteen thousand, which is actually a reduction from the total amount, um, of the separated commission.
So what was the total, what was the separated accounts again, twenty, twenty-two? Yeah, okay, so that's seven, i- i- and just to explain, you know, we had all these little mini accounts for different boards and commissions, and, and it was just kind of odd. And sometimes they'd use the money and sometimes they wouldn't, and so let's just create a pool, if they had, will need funding, we'll support it, but they gotta go direct, you know, come to the pool, so that we're kind of allocating it here. Rather than having these little pots all over the place, so. Um, and then we reduced the pot, just looking at experience of the last couple of years, uh, down to fifteen thousand.
What have they been spending, what, do you have a sense of the total? It's twenty-two is the budget, but.
Yeah, we have to go through a part of that was the EDC.
If you don't have it.
Yeah, and it was also the EDC, yeah, and we had added money to EDC, because when we had a full-time position, there was a lot of marketing initiatives and stuff, and so we said, okay, I guess we're not gonna have a person do it, so we reduced it, so.
So is it fair to say that this three hundred and forty thousand dollar budget had a hundred and fifty-five dollar increase? Hey, we can move on.
That was easy, I didn't even bring any kids or my puppy. Um, I, I did have, unless you have questions, you know, there were a couple of increases, um, really namely, um, due to legal notice expenses. As well as, um. Um, in- increases that were statutorily driven, um, all our staff required, um, certifications, all those fees are going up, um, for continuing it as well. And now it's mandated that land use commissioners, uh, have training, ongoing training. Um, and so I did, um, allocate for some, uh, you know, some of those are free opportunities to have, uh, training for the commissioners, but others, um, we do, again, need to bring in our land use council. Or some other professionals throughout the state, and that would help, um. Uh, as we know, uh, zoning and is, um, a hot topic, and, and it is very advantageous to have our commissioners understand what their role was, um, so. I'm, I'm in support of that. Um, and then lastly, um, we're hoping to increase our permit fees, you know, for every building permit, we have associated zoning approvals, as well as our individual commissioner. Um, uh, application processes, and those fees have not been updated in quite some time, uh, we're not consistent with neighboring municipalities. Um, it is through ordinance, so it will be coming back before the, uh, before the board, but that is something that I'm working on, uh, that will help, help, uh, bring in some revenue as well.
Do you, do you know, what is the revenue for land use fees, do you have a general ballpark to play in the spot, but? Oh, because our fees are really low, I think.
Our fees are low, and the state takes fifty-eight dollars from every application.
So. Fifteen thousand.
Okay, for land use, not like the building.
No. For the tax split.
Yeah.
It looks like last year came in at almost seventeen-six.
Yeah. But then, but our, our actual fees are pretty low, I know we talked about, so Erin's gonna make some recommendations, and we'll come to our board, we wanna look at recent fees.
Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Reduction because of no kid.
I have all of them. It's a miracle you can't hear them.
Public works.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What was the page, sorry?
Nine.
Yeah. So, um. So in public works, I'm, I have two, uh, budget requests. The first one is equipment repairs. Um, that, that budget has been a hundred and twenty-four thousand for several years, we have not increased it. Parts of labor have increased. You all know, over the last several years, decreased significantly. Um, two thousand twenty-two, the actual expenditure was a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And in two thousand twenty-three, it was a hundred and thirty-one thousand. So, um, my request is to. Is to increase that from a hundred and twenty-four to a hundred and thirty-two thousand to cover the additional expenses associated with rising costs. And that's, so that's it for equipment repairs. Questions on that, or?
I should know the answer to this, the seven hundred thousand for roads. How is that different than the CIP money?
That is a CIP, that's the major roads account, which is kept.
So it shows up in the operating budget, even though it's a CIP line?
Yes, that's part of the budget that we move into.
You're doing a survey.
Right.
Will that be completed in this fiscal year? That we're, that we're talking about?
Yes, it's gonna be, they're gonna begin that in the spring.
You said like March, April?
Um.
Starting in March, April.
There's a, it's, it's through SCROG, we're getting a, going to be getting a grant for, for this, and, uh. They have a, a deadline in the, in the grant requirements for when the study needs to commence, and it's early spring. And it's not something that is, that's time-consuming process, so I don't have an exact date, but probably, um. By the time that, um. We're gonna be ready to pay, I hope to have that study in hand, which will be, you know, is, you know, earlier than like May.
And so, and so that was my question, will that data be actionable in this budget?
It, it, it may be that we make some adjustments, but we wanna get on their schedule very early in, in spring, so that we don't miss our opportunities. Problem is all, we're competing with all the other towns in the state to get, you know, to get, um, these state bid contracts, which are.
I, I don't envision it, to think about it, we finish our, our, what's second in March, we're not gonna have a result from this study until probably, maybe from May at the earliest, right?
Right.
So at best, you're just gonna be juggling the street, the, the miles, or maybe allocating the miles paved to different streets than you originally expected.
Yeah, we might be making some adjustments. Too late, um. But I, you know, I think as far as really having a plan, a revamped plan that's gonna get us to a certain goal, probably looking at the following year.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I was trying to figure out that she disappeared.
Then she took it down.
Did she disappear? Where's her box?
Oh, she hasn't been elevated to actual panel.
Yes, she just.
Or.
Oh, okay. Um. Well, so the, it would be, we move through the, he's going through different ones, but if, if there's anything in the main budget that you wanna ask, that's part of the main budget we're talking about.
Yeah, and I was just trying to suss out, do we need to be thinking about, uh, allocation?
Right.
Uh, to, to bump it up in anticipation of the plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it sounds like maybe next year.
So the, the second, uh, budget request that I have is the highway overtime account, and, uh, this account likewise, it's, we have an extra expenditure, it has been more than the, um, the budget that I was just, uh, which is, um, twenty-two thousand early, the, two thousand twenty-two, the expenditure was thirty-nine thousand, and in two thousand twenty-three, it was thirty-eight thousand change, rounding. Um, so I, I'm requesting, uh, to increase that budget, uh, to forty thousand, um, just to, to cover anticipated expenses.
I think we are obviously having more frequent storms, more events, we're calling in, um, uh, public works to be prepared, so a lot of time, people want to stand by now because of the flooding and, you know, we're having more trees down, we're just having more and more of these types of emergencies, and then on top of that, I know the, uh, police department for special events has been requesting, uh, dump trucks and things like that as, uh, public safety measures.
Barriers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that, uh, we, I, I know we talked about, did we pass that on to if it's an event, or do we not?
Some of those events, I, I think we can ch- charge for.
Yeah, the PD charges, right?
For example, fireworks, we don't, we don't charge for.
Right.
But, um, there's, there's these private, um, I guess it's the, uh, triathlon, um, that...
Right, but then you have like the, you have the Fourth of July parade, right? So, you know, and that's double time or whatever for people to do, it's important because this is what we're in now, unfortunately, they have to have these types of barriers to put up.
So, so any of those events around the Fourth of July, church, and...
Yeah, right.
The triathlon, stuff like, you know, the PD sending a bill, and we should pack on it with cost for public works.
Yes.
That was gonna be my question as well, um, regarding private organizations hosting events, are we passing on any sort of fee to them for those special, um, accommodations that we need to make with roadways and that sort of thing?
So we, we haven't been, but we're, we're going to.
Okay.
We, we do for police, but, uh, but we have not been doing it, yeah, and I think this is probably like the third or fourth year now that we've been doing this, so...
And that's a, it's a relatively small percentage of this total budget, is these couple, a couple of these events.
Right.
But we should, we should be reimbursing that.
Like the summer concert series, I see the guys there sometimes, is that another, would that be considered an event?
Uh, which is, yes, all of those, all of those, you know, we've kind, we've responded in the last several years to what, you know, the emergency services are looking for, kind of beefed up the, the presence from public works and, um, traffic control and so forth. That, we, it was apparently an increase from that, you know, and I, and I think, you know, could be these flooding events where we're, we're coming in and we're proactive and coming in early to make sure that, um, we're, we're prepared for what floods down along the shorelines and so forth.
No, yeah, so we're bringing in the crews early to make sure they can get here. You know, if you're waiting, if you're reactive, then, you know, if trees are down all over the place, they might take them an hour or an hour and a half, but if I finally get around loops and stuff like that, so that's one of the reasons why we're actually calling it.
Just so you know, this year, we're already short four thousand dollars.
But I don't have any other requests, so, uh, Public Works budget is a status quo, I don't think.
Okay, maybe we take a break since the balance count operations? Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any questions on the gas and oil, just because there is a big increase, I know Josh spent a lot of time on analyzing.
Right, so we, so we did, we locked into a rate, um, for next fiscal year, which was, it's actually, uh, prices are down for fuel, um, but, when I went through and estimated what, what I think we're gonna need, and it's, I think it represents, represents a pretty good increase from the previous year.
What's the reason why it's, why we're...
I think it was, I don't know if it was underestimated, or, um...
We're, we're only locking in about eighty percent, because if we, if we lock in too much, we have to pay store, if we don't use it.
Right.
But you don't know, you, I, I'm just surprised that, you know, it, it went up ninety thousand last year, I can understand that because of the increases we get next year, but the price is coming down this year, I was looking to see it coming down instead of going up.
Right.
And so what you're saying is no additional usage.
It's not, it's not additional usage really, if you look at the quantities, I think, I think it was underestimated the entire year, that's what, that's what happened.
These are futures, right?
Last year, we...
Probably futures?
We maintained the lock-in.
I guess the part I don't understand is the actuals are one eighteen.
We took it from, what's that?
The actuals are one eighteen last year, right?
Yeah, but, so when we built the two oh two though for this year, we took an average of the usage over the last five years, and then took that, um, and we moved it from all the different departments, remember?
Yeah, that was the other thing, this used to standard, and then we, you know, you have your, yeah, pulled it all together, so we did our best last year.
And this is only the second year that we're locking in, we didn't lock in, and we got kind of hurt, we had new appropriation for fuel, so now we're, we're, like, trying to do like the school buses, you know, just locking it so we can budget for it, so, um, yeah, so that first...
That counts for part of that increase, you know, right, because we can lock in and the prices might skyrocket.
Well, we were also, the first time we did it was when, this was, when all the stuff was going on with Ukraine, and we were worried about getting, uh, you know, trying to work, so anyways, it is what it is, but this year's, this is for the new, you just got this recently, though, this contract.
Yes, we are, yeah.
So, yeah. But the gallons are more after, I think, we use, it's more after. We're gonna get better handle on that, so...
Yeah.
So this will be the third budget year where we have the consolidated account and a contract. It's next year.
The second year.
The second year, excuse me, the second.
Yeah, I think that's why it went up so much last year, because we pulled it together.
Yeah, and it was later, because we had not moved done contracts before, so... Um, if you want any in the questions, then maybe we do a break, we've got the food here, and then we can finish up the last few, does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, five-minute break, if you get...
Yeah, bring it back and then we'll continue on, so it's my pause before...
Yeah, and out too, look it out. It's, it's the, it's the uniform, we decided this was the uniform.
I can remember when we ordered two pizzas, I was like, please.
How are you?
I'm pretty good. You know, it was like a...
Some bitch here, right?
Yeah. Hey, I can do this, you know?
I think we should...
Yeah, some of that should be for... Fuck, yeah.
Yeah.
Madison Chambers, or... Okay, a couple different things, that's, that's a good point, I got, I'm sure we made out of it, congratulations. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Look, you know, I hate these tables, I always hate those.
Because of the way that they're sitting like this, so I was sitting at the same table. Yeah, yeah, no, I get it, yes.
Oh, I think, okay.
You know what it is too?
I think I...
Oh, can't miss your house? Why should I come back so soon?
I think it's the floor. Because you're right next to, you're right next to John. Yeah, yeah, that was, and I had gone, I don't know, for something, or, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, exactly. Excuse me. Exactly. It was just...
Yes, yeah.
Was it good? Oh, good.
You said it's right, but now I feel like, like...
Okay. Yeah, yeah. All right, great. You know, like, yeah, I don't know, that's not usually the case.
I tried not to.
This is one so...
Yeah.
For what? Hi, she doesn't say, hi, you're one of those moms?
I know, I'm not at all.
Thanks for taking care of this.
I was just saying, Jack's back at school, he's, that's early, he's one of the best who's been working at the school.
That's good.
Number one in the state. He loves it, you ever saw him at the end of the night? So, twice so far, uh, or yeah, they...
I'm gonna watch some TV.
Oh, yeah, you'll see, um, we had a bunch, right, last night it was mom and I, you know, after her, her tag.
She said, you know, we said not to go, I said, okay.
Two shirts, Jack and Noah. But they were tall, and... It's like, get our presentation, it's fancy, pressy. Of course, for sure, I know, but I love, I love saying, um, yeah, like I say, spend on jeans, and now, right, when you're in, you know, it's, you know, it's... And they're, you're there all day, and they're pleasant.
So, yeah, so...
I felt so...
But that means we said...
Yeah, now I... There's always a difference for...
Yeah, I think they're good to see, you know, definitely pretending to, you have your new courts in here.
They are, I was like, no, I just sat, and then I heard, oh, I might have one.
I like some overview, but I mean, there's that...
Derby, really?
But as I said, we, my director has a plan, and then we would basically just do everything, either, you know, every, I wouldn't write without myself on the table. We never had this like that, where you went through...
How are you?
So, why, save a trade.
I just, you know, um, you know.
Wow.
Yeah, just at the interim, we're at, we're at halfway, I think tomorrow.
How about the...
Hundred percent.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's right.
Oh, my gosh. My manager did the act in a way. So we have, I guess, some sense of... On the Thomas, of the, um...
Michael was beyond just...
It's literally a cliff, and they set up a table, and the sky is all clothing, it's dark.
He is.
Oh, my God.
It's, it's very good. And I'm like, they gotta look kinda cool like that. And I love, you know, John, yes.
It's been...
Sticker on. This was, because they're like that. No, you don't, not at all. It's actually really neat.
No, it's like saving stacks, you can basically cut around.
Do you judge the...
We have one of those with some stickers on it.
That's cool, yeah, it is.
Mikinos, Peros, etc. And then...
They don't have some of this here.
So I thought maybe we could reconvene here, because just, uh, I know we got people full, and I know everybody wants to go home. They're recording, um, so if everybody wants to... So you're up next, lady. Oh, me? I think it's really just a decision shifting. Yeah. Page sixty-one. Or no additional budget requests. And, yeah, you can explain that, because that was that Lauren's position that got reallocated. So that's one finance, am I right, problems? Yeah.
Yep, 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 yep.
There it is. Yeah. And that's kind of it. That's it. So, Art, page sixty-four, technology. I will say that Lauren, in terms of being, where everybody is running well, come to me, because I know, so... What's, uh, the art, art, okay, yep? Oh, yes, it's art, oh, art.
I, you know, um, do you have, Steve Fuest is also available, if it's possible to bring him up also, just wanted to introduce myself to a few, I, I don't think I know everybody on the boards, I haven't met everybody, uh, at least. Uh, my name's Art Sickle, although I know most of you, there are a couple of folks that I, I haven't, uh, haven't had the pleasure of meeting in person. Uh, I've been the, uh, IT Director for the town and the school system for the last, oh, twenty-three years, and, um, Steve Fuest is our... And, um, Steve Fuest is our Assistant Manager and he's been with us for, I think it's thirty-one. Years, so, uh, there's a fair amount of experience here. Uh, and, uh, we are a shared department and as you can see from our staffing profiles, Rita Boland is our. Uh, our Webmaster Application Support Specialist and she is also, uh, a shared employee. So there's one point five employees, uh, for the town. That's half of me, Steve and Rita. Uh, and that, that is basically the, um, staffing profile for the town. Um, I wanted to just point out a couple of things in our budget. The technology equipment line of, uh, there is actually CIP money. Uh, so, so it does get discussed in that way. Uh, it is primarily obsolescence replacement at, at the moment. We don't have, uh, any other projects looped in here right now, but there's a. Obsolescence replacement for the town equipment that covers, you know, laptops, desktops. Uh, wherever we need, um. Data closet type equipment, switches and servers and all that good stuff. Uh, that makes the network run and hopefully keeps us secure. And, um, we support. You know, basically all of the town and school equipment and, uh, networking. Also the operating system hardware and software and, uh. We run the district applications and the town applications and many of those are shared. So there's some real economy of scale that the town gets to take advantage of. And sometimes the school gets the, uh, the benefit. But in any event, the only thing that is probably, uh, important to point out in this request this year is, as you can see. Our professional and technical services line, that increased by a large percentage. It's not a huge amount of money because it's not, not a huge amount of money to begin with. But that's really the result of just monies that, uh, are actually operating expenses that. Are the result of some of the small application implementations that we do every year through that, uh, CIP, uh, funds. So, you know, that was planned, uh, and worked with, uh, Peggy and Stacy to. Move that into an operating line that, that made sense, uh, and, and reflects more accurately that it's an operating line. Uh, I don't know if we have any questions for me on the budget. It's fairly, uh, I think it's fairly straightforward this year. Um, the, the numbers in professional technical service that did go up are related to, um. Among other things, it's related to our, uh, conversion from on-premise exchange server for email to our Gmail. And Google, uh, implementation, which was last year. And, uh, last fiscal year, anyway. And, uh, other than that, we've also had, uh, a couple of other small, uh, applications that have migrated to annual. But they were, they were, this is a continuation, software licenses, support for, uh, annual maintenance. On different software products and, and those are increases in the costs as well from one year to the next. Um, is there anything that, uh, I can answer for the group or do I leave anything out you're interested in?
I'm sure if you want to talk about the.
I'm sorry, what was? I, I did, I do have an additional budget request I wanted to mention, but I couldn't hear what you said, Stace.
I was just wondering if we wanted to spring up the. There, though. Um. That we're gonna. That now. Yeah, the budgeting. The budgeting, um, application that basically. Takes our budget data and comes up with a much more digestible kind of budget report that allows public to have better access to our financial data. Um, so that will be rolling out. In. For May. Yeah, for May. So the final budget that will be going to the public, right? Well, hopefully we'll have. Um. You. The new look. Like you might have seen a lot of towns use this. It's becoming, a lot of towns in Connecticut are adopting it, but it's just a much more user-friendly way to, to look at the data and parse it versus looking at kind of our munis reports. Um, so I think it'll be a good step up for public consumption to look at the budget.
What is that show up?
That's.
Your line, right, Art?
It's in the professional technical services for next year.
And, and I will say that, like, you know, everything we're moving towards is cloud-based. That's gonna, it's more expensive than with Google, obviously, that was more expensive. So we're also using a lot more applications. We have apps that, you know, the town app, all these things kind of do add up. One of the things we're probably gonna do is look at some of the. You know, different communication, uh, systems that we've been using and trying to consolidate. You know, we're gonna kind of do a review of some of those, uh, applications this year just to see. What's working, what's not, you know, cause we've been trying different things. Um, but, you know. Uh, you know, this is an area that I think, uh, we look from the public, at least for the strategic planning process and communication and how things are, you know, uh, presented to the public and. Uh, public outreach are important, so. Um, I think it's important to keep investing in some of the technology.
And also in the spirit of, uh, improving communications all the time. You know, our website, uh, is, is very, uh, has, has grown into quite a, a large. System and we've got, uh, you know, all the social media accounts and everything. And we do have a, a, an additional budget request in for thirty thousand dollars for part-time help. A part-time position. I think, I think we budgeted twenty hours at that point. Um, and the intention of that is to be able to offload some of this work. That our, uh, Webmaster and Application Support Specialist is currently, uh, handling right now. Again, remember she's, she, just like Stephen and myself, are point five employees shared with the Board of Ed. So the, the workload is really fairly significant. And, um, you know, in any event, there, it's, it, to take on more. Uh, and make, make some capacity available for the more complex. Uh, tasks that need to be done, projects that we're working on. Um, we do need to get some, some help in there, some additional hands. So that's what our budget request is for, and I think it's, I think it's identified in the book pretty clearly.
And it sort of mind, like, you know. Every board and commission requires, you know, documents to get posted. Meeting notices. I mean, it is a huge undertaking now and then on top of that, we're laying around hybrid meetings. Um. And. You have a much higher expectation for the public for communications.
Right.
So, you know, this was brainstorming a little bit. How do we get some more resources to support the, the demands that the public is having for information? Um, and in a timely way too. Um, so, um, I think that was where Art suggested this kind of part-time person to assist the Webmaster. Um, because now everything's on multiple platforms, which is. It's hard. You know, I was just talking about this at lunch. Yeah, when I went to the, uh, chamber lunch, you know, all these different channels now, marketing channels and people expecting to be on. We're not on Instagram. Why isn't the town on Instagram? Well, that's a whole nother effort, you know, that requires staff members who. Put it in the Instagram form and then put it out to the public. So, um. Anyway, so it's, it's a challenge. And so the thought was to have an, uh, additional person that can assist. And, and keep in mind, we're twenty-four seven. We have storms over the weekends. Um, and if I want to do a storm message or not do a storm message, we just tell people that road closures or something. We need to figure out a better way to get that done quickly, um, you know, outside of normal business hours. Right now, we have. A part-time, a half a person basically on our budget to do this. We're the seven-day-a-week twenty-four-seven job. So. It's kind of becoming unsustainable. Um, and we just gotta, I think we have to think about streamlining, but we also have to figure out more resources to, to, to handle.
But is this person supporting? The. The getting the, the videos posted. Posted and all that. Or are they creating social media posts? Are we?
Right now, they're doing both.
Pardon?
Right now, they're doing both. They're creating all the icons and everything for the posts.
So we don't ask Art to write, to create and write new social media posts, do we? No, Rita's doing it.
No, Rita's doing it.
But that's Rita, Bruce.
I.
It's our department, but it's, it's Rita.
But she's not content, but she ends up having to create a graphic. And then she has to keep the content and then she has to put on the website, link it to the website. Um, and so the only content creator really is. Myself or a department, depending on what they're trying to put out there. And we don't really have a kind of formal communications content person. So it's really staff that handles the content somehow. Um, and then Rita's kind of putting it in graphic form and linking it and using all these different channels to get it out, so.
And also, you know, also managing all of the, you know, the ADA compliance requirements for all of these, uh, you know, posted. Post. But, you know, she works with departments for content. She also create, she is very capable, uh, and has done a phenomenal job growing the site. And, uh, I think representing a, you know, a super professional site that, uh, you know, we're very proud of. And, uh, I think that we need to probably get the routine tasks of some of these postings just off of her so she can do more of the complex.
Yeah, I think what I was asking is we're not calling on you to create content. We're calling on you to translate. Somebody else's content into a postable. Uh. Format.
But primarily, we do rely on receiving the content from other departments. Um, however, there's often a lot of input. Uh, to, to contribute as well to the final product that gets posted.
And so this new position would be doing that as well.
This new position in, in my vision would be doing, uh, some of the existing posting without much content creation. And I'm assuming that we would take on a larger role in the content creation part from my.
Cause there's, there's also the element of, you know. We have a public information session that's been scheduled. We vote on setting it or whatever. That now has to go through a process of notifying the public, scheduling it. Content, you know, and we really don't have anybody that manages that whole process. Um, so sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. There's no one who's owning that and saying, right now, it's like, I want to make sure it goes on the social media. I want to make sure it goes out on, you know. We need to have more of a streamlined, this is what happens every time we have a public hearing. And then this is what gets put out for the public hearing. And this is the documents that are. And then it has to get put on the website, you know, so. Um, it's just a lot now, you know, that's just.
So if the Board of Finance wants to do TikTok dances, we have to create our content.
Yeah, you did one. Oh, yeah.
Of course. Can I see that real quick? Can we put that up on the screen?
Matt. Matt, it's happening. Yeah, the town does have a TikTok. It will.
Seriously, the poor, poor Rita's also out there taking pictures.
Yeah.
Like she's like our chief photographer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the photography and then, like I said, there's also this element of. People are expecting, as you see, seven days a week, our beaches are so busy on the weekends. And they want to know, is it closed? Is the ham and assa closed? Did, you know, or can, are there spots available to circle up? So it's just all the, it's a huge, you know. We have really no one.
It's the new town square. Like they don't have.
Yeah.
That's how people expect to get that for me.
Yeah. And the problem is we don't have people to, who are responsible for doing this seven days a week. So, um, anyway, so this was one way to move it forward perhaps and. Part of the rest of the issue.
Right.
We tried to keep it. No budget. So.
Well, as it is, it's only one and a half FTEs for the, the entire tech department from the town budget. And the benefit of having a larger, you know, a, a larger group of tech support folks and network folks. Uh, you know, when we combine that with full-time people, you know, individuals that are funded by the Board of Ed side as well. There's a lot of common network functionality that, you know, it's a great benefit to the town. It's the same network essentially. So, you know, many of the, of the things that we're doing on a, on a regular basis impact everyone. Uh, all of the districts and, uh, including, uh, some of the police department and, and other, you know, certainly all of the town, all of the other town departments. So I think, I think it's been a very efficient method. Um, you know, those economies of scale and, and the common platforms that we have. It's, it's been, uh, you know, quite good to have. Uh, you know, the shared department in that case, uh, the, the total department has more folks in the school system. Uh, than we do on the town side, just the sheer numbers of pieces of equipment there alone. Um, you know, there's, there's an awful lot of equipment. Everywhere and the, and the town's, you know, been doing, I think we've been doing a pretty good job keeping the town current. Um, so I, I, you know, it's just been a great, uh. A great efficiency, I think, having the shared department and, uh, but the, the downside is. In this case, we don't have a lot, we don't have overlap in, uh, you know, Rita's not only doing the town website and social media, but she's also doing. The school district's website and their social media and messaging and all of that. In addition to one other person that's not involved in the tech department at all. But, uh, you know, it's, I think that it would be a, a great benefit to get at least the part-time help.
Any other questions for Art? Okay. Great. Thank you, Art.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Good. Um. Next is. Town clerk and the. We're charged with. Town clerk. Page seventy-five or. Yeah, seventy.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So for those of you that don't know, I'm Nancy Martucci, the town clerk. I have Andy Vine with me here, um, our registrar, one of our registrar voters. And probably easier to start with the town clerk side and then we'll. Information. Um, so I have been in the town clerk's office, uh, for seventeen years total, twelve years as town clerk. Um. We are, well, just to give you a little background, for those of you that don't know, we have a lot of, we wear a lot of different hats in our office. Just a quick rundown. Uh, we're the keeper of the town seal. We handle all the recordings and, uh, all the, uh, real estate transactions. We keep all the recorded documents in the vault. Um, the land records that are recorded as well as other documents, board and commission, uh. Uh, minutes and agendas. Uh, we have all the other town documents there that we maintain, keep for the history of the town. We handle the vital records, birth, marriage, death records. We handle the vital records, birth, marriage, death records. We do all the certified copies of those. We issue marriage licenses, dog licenses. Uh, we're not a republic. We keep all the veterans' discharges. Do trade names, liquor permits. Uh, we do the postings now, the agendas and the minutes to the website, town website. And we administer oaths. Uh, we handle the town meetings. And we do all the absentee ballots, uh, for any of the elections and we actually are the ones that certify the election afterwards. Uh, along working with the registrars voters. Um, the Town Clerk, uh, operating budget, I have left the same. Uh, that part of it, I have not asked for anything else. The two things that my office is asking for, um, there's going to be a little overlap with, um, part of it in with the registrar voters. But just on the Town Clerk side is a staff, um, basically for overtime during election this year, dog licensing time and town meetings. Uh, for the overtime of that, it was asking for six to five hundred hours. Um, again, that's actually for my existing staff when things get busy. Especially this year with the presidential, uh, election. The other thing that I asked for in addition was because the town charter changed, um, the ordinances while the departments, there's going to be a large, uh, amount of ordinance information going in. And I usually would have, be able to cover that through my legal, uh, budget. But this year, because of that, I'm asking for an additional amount, um, for the ordinances and I think we said if I end here, five thousand, yeah. Uh, so those are the, those are the two things really for my office. Um, the other part of it, um, overlaps with the registrars, um, just for, uh, voting purposes. Does anybody have any questions just about the Town Clerk side of things?
Your office for early voting is very specific. Is that the sixty-five hundred is included in that too for early voting? Does that really impact you at all?
Early voting is going to be completely separate with the registrars.
It's free.
Okay.
Eleven hundred dollars. Yep. Uh, so if we're good, maybe we talk about the registrars, cause obviously that's a big.
Right, and a few things that I have, you know, like I said, we overlap. The first thing is just, um, the addition of additional costs for ballots this year.
So just real, it gets people, it's page one sixty-nine, so we're in the additional budget requests and we're talking about uh, the registers, uh, voters, additional budget request.
You've got a full page.
It's a big deal.
So the ballots, we, we, we really overlap between my office and the registrar voter's office. So for the increase in that, mainly because of early voting, and in a presidential election, the numbers get so high, uh, we figured about fifty-five hundred for that. Um, the next item is what really is still my office. Um, is asking for the help of two additional people during the presidential election. And I'm figuring about twenty-two dollars an hour, seven day, seven hours a day, figuring about twenty-five days. Um, during twenty-twenty, certainly we had COVID, so it was a little bit different, but, um, I started off with using many, um, departmental staff. And I will still be doing that most likely, um, to help putting together absentee ballot packets and getting everything ready. Um, and we really sort of have an assembly line of things so that as we start doing absentee ballots, we can just start grabbing. Um, so the supplies come in, it's all, it's all different, uh, boxes. And everything kind of has to come together because there's like five different things that go together as a packet for an absentee ballot. So last time I used various departments as they were, had a little downtime, they would help us all put the two things together. I would probably do that again this year. In twenty-twenty, because of the increase of, uh, people getting absentee ballots, I started off with an additional uh, eight employees helping where I had them paid, I should say temporary people that I brought on. And then we narrowed it down to about three. I'm hoping this time that just hiring two people to help out will be enough in addition to my staff and leaving it that. Um, because now of early voting. Um, the early voting is not going to hit until the last part of, um, we'll say the month right before the election day where absentee balloting is going on for an entire month. So I figured, I'm estimating two helpers right from the beginning and possibly straight through. If not, then, you know, if I don't need that, those extra two people, I can let them go. But I'm, I'm being very conservative about what I might need.
So we're adding early voting as a vector, a new vector. So there's in-person, there's absentee and now early.
Yes.
So what is? Why wouldn't the absentee voter just vote early?
We can't guarantee that. Um, number one, third way, um, we have numerous people that go overseas. Um, that's kind of a separate segment of absentee's that we do.
I can vote early voting for absentee.
You can, and the whole first part of the month when absentee ballots are available, there is no early voting. Early voting only is, in the, in November, it will only be, uh, the fourteen days prior. So, and we do have a lot of people that are either overseas, they're, you know, in Florida, they're all over the place. We have some military. So that, that's still going to happen.
Yeah, you're still going to see a reduction though in absentee ballots.
Right, right, and that's.
People will choose to do early voting because they know that's an option, but absentee ballot is still going to be a.
It's still in existence and it's basically because you're not going to be in town.
Right.
Um, and, and, and it's the person's choice, um, of whether they want to do early voting or really, or absentee. They haven't, the state has not answered us yet, um, as to if someone comes in the office for an absentee ballot and early voting is happening right across the hall, if I have to send them there, we're still offering them an absentee ballot. We don't know the answer to that yet.
So, so you're kind of worst casing it? This is, this is.
Um, yeah, I'm thinking, that's, that's the way we've looked at it right now. But again, it's a guessing game because we just don't know. So we have to be prepared for, for whatever happens.
Nancy, oh, sorry.
Hang on.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, what, what about primaries? Early voting and absentee ballots? Policies affect primary?
There will be early voting in primaries. Um, it's a little bit different, less days. But, but we'll still be doing absentee ballots as well.
Okay, and you built that in as well?
We're figuring all of that out, yes, yeah.
Okay, I'll hop in there. Nancy, are there any, this is Jen, are there any age requirements or training that's required for people to help with the processing of absentee ballot applications and sending out the mailers?
Um, no, so, um, no, so I, I'm hiring somebody that we would do the training in my office for the absentee ballot. Um, so no, there's not, not an age limit that, that I'm aware of.
I think we're helping us.
I'm, I guess.
Direction though.
Okay, I guess what I'm wondering is, would there be an opportunity for us to maybe reach out to members of our student government? Or, uh, students that are involved with the exchange club? Would there be any opportunity for them to do these types of things in exchange for service hours?
Um, possibly bring together packets and things at the beginning instead of using, um, department staff, yes. Um, when it actually comes to issuing, you know, I would be requiring somebody to sit in front of a computer in my office. Um, and to scroll over, um, all the documents staying secure.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so, so that's, you know, like looking for some additional, two additional people in my office for that portion of it. I think would, would be sufficient this year because of early voting. And then the whole issue of early voting is, is a whole new thing, different. Any questions on the absentee portion?
Will it still be no excuse absentee?
We're still, you have to, it's still the six reasons. That's, we're not no excuse yet, so.
But wasn't one of the excuses, I'm just not comfortable being around people?
Um, that they changed it from, yeah, from illness to, to sickness to illness. But, um, the November, the November election will have a question on it so that the, the reasons will change. So that's going to be coming up.
But that would be for subsequent.
That's, that's later on. That's not this coming, this year. That's the Town Clerk portion of it. And now we go over to the registrars.
And are there any facility costs associated with early voting?
Um, yes, so we're gonna, we're gonna live, yeah, no, we'll get into all that, yes. So, so we'll jump into that next portion here. Um, if we want to go into.
I just keep going on the line.
Go down, yeah, let's just go down the line items. You know, A- Anne will get into more of this, but the main thing to know is when you're talking about now that we're required to do early voting, you're talking about the registers' positions, their job descriptions are changing now. Um, and, and they're going to be requesting some additional financing to accommodate their extra hours. We'll let you go into this one. We will, yes, we'll end up having to spend every, all of early voting in the office, doing early voting. It's not like we can get high school kids to come in and do it part-time. We can't do that. They can't get into the system. Um, even our poll workers, if we can get some of those people to come in and kind of help us out, if they don't know what our job is on a daily basis, and they're not going to learn that in, in an hour before we give them early voting. We can't leave them on their own. So somebody's got to be there to answer the questions for them. And just like election day, people are going to come through the, through early voting. Ninety percent of them are going to be just like people at the polls, right? Show their ID, they get the ballot, they vote, they leave. It's going to be a handful that come in who aren't registered or you know, whatever their issue is for the day. And with, with the presidential preference primary, um, you know, we'll get the unaffiliateds and the Democrats who think the Republicans and, you know, all of that stuff will have to be worked.
So, but that, one thing you're talking about is this April.
Yes, yes.
So are you funded for that?
Yes, we're, we're, we're going to be fine for that because it's only, it's four days.
March, the, and the March, and then the primary is actually on the second of April.
It's actually Easter weekend. Yes, so it's Easter weekend. So there's actually, yeah, there's four days and then there's, you know, they'll have a day off because of, because of Easter. The, the other thing that I just want to mention too, um, that Anne is talking about, when they have people working, um, in, um, they, they consider it early voting EV. Um, these people are trained. Um, they're, they have all different levels of experience as well. Um, you know, so, so I know Jen, like you were asking like about people helping, I don't think in this, in this situation for EV or the polls, you could bring anybody in just to jump in. There has to be special training. And again, everybody that's there between who's a moderator, you know, who's handing out ballots. They're all going to have various training. Um, and I'm going to say too, this is a combination of being at the polls and absentee balloting. And every town is going to be working this out individually, um, based on a, on a, we'll say a loose procedure from the Secretary of State's office. But then it's up to us to figure out sort of combining a polling location and doing absentee ballots. Um, and then securing everything, um, because they're going to actually have a ballot in an envelope. It'll be different than absentee, but it'll be going into an envelope and then coming to the Town Clerk's office at the end of every evening. Um, that's fourteen days before November election, um, to get secured in the town vault.
So what the, just so I understand, what is absolutely required?
Staffing wise?
And, and staffing wise for a day during early voting. Say it's a Monday, a week before the election, three o'clock in the afternoon.
So the early voting handbook or from the Secretary of State's office is requiring that we have a moderator, which is someone who has to be certified. You have four people in the registrar's office who are certified moderators, so that's good. Um, and we do have a pool of moderators that we can pull from. And those folks have been around for a while. They're going to be easier to train than somebody coming off the street. So we, so we have some relief there. And then you're going to need at least an R and a D for curbside voting, any curbside voting that come, that could come. I think it's a minimum of five people. So minimum of five. When we were discussing this, I kept saying, I think they were saying seven, and they said, no, five. And I was like, okay, we'll just try five, but I think it's seven. Um, the, the idea and the plan is that we're going to be using, um, room A. Um, and, and, um, using that and the registrar's office because of the computers and all the, um, C. We have to have access to C V R S. Everything, so. The difference between the polling location and doing early voting, there's no poll book. Everything's done at C V R S. And there's no tabulator, right, as Nancy said, right? You're filling out a ballot, you're putting it in an envelope and it's going in a box until it gets counted with all the rest of the absentee ballots on a budget. So, so as when you commit for an absentee ballot, we're immediately in C V R S and we're, we're keeping track of all of it. They're going to be doing the exact same thing, going into C V R S and marking it that it's, um, you were there for early voting and you have voted.
So, is it a state providing any support? Have you, so?
So they, they did, they did give them, um, for early voting, a grant of, um, ten thousand five hundred dollars, which was the exact amount that went to every town. So it didn't matter your side.
Sports, Stanford, Fairfield, same amount of money.
So you can see, when you see the bottom line here of what we're asking, it actually, I think when you're looking at, did it get subtracted out?
It is on the bottom.
That's what we have and, and you know.
You only have to have one, then there'll be no location, right?
Yeah, so, so Madison only has to have one location, yes, which is good. And, and because we have the conference room right next to the registrar's office, we're hoping that that works.
So you're confident that you've bracketed the expense with this, as best you can. At the end, it's going to be what it's going to be, and if you need more, we're going to give you more.
Hundred percent.
When, when, when do you think you'll have your process mapped out uh, in advance of the primary? Cause you'll have to have it done in advance of the primary, right?
So the Secretary of State did not finalize their procedures yet. They will be giving them to us hopefully, um, the beginning of March. Um, or maybe they said the end of February. The registers have to come up with their plan and get it to the Secretary of State immediately.
Before, yeah.
Yeah, immediately. Um, the Secretary of State said to us yesterday on our conference call, do not ask us what you think you should be doing and what you should be ordering and how you should do it. You, you're there, you've been there. You're the best ones to answer and make that guess. So, so I have to say to you that. So I have to say though, I've sat down with the registrars. I think that, that Madison should be very proud of them. They put, you know, pen to paper and they spent a lot of time going through every single thing. They've got pages of documents. They've read through what the procedure currently is. I think that they have worked everything out to, you know, and this is because of experience. Um, I, I think that they did an incredible job so far. And it has to keep maneuvering as you go and you find something's working, something's not working. And I think that they are the best at doing that.
So.
We also have the best moderators in the state.
You are absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
I would suggest maybe when you're ready to go public with early voting procedure, maybe we call a special meeting, just for the purpose of explaining it. Explaining it. Um, and, um, you know, and getting it out into the public in, in that way. Do, does that, does the fishbowl have to be quarantined during this week?
What do you mean by quarantine?
Well, is it open? It's going to be available for other meetings now?
No, no, I've, we've secured that already. It's a polling place. Yes.
So it's, it's off the table for anybody who wants to schedule a meeting during the town.
I've, I've blocked it all out.
Blocked it, okay, good. That's, that was my question is.
Yeah.
But is there, there's a, a location issue though with, right? If it's open for early voting, can people not go walk by it or is there all this?
So, so here's the interesting thing. Well, there's a couple of things here. It is technically, it's not considered a polling location. However, having said that, um, the registrar voters will be on the November ballot. So they cannot be moderators right now, um, in November. They're fine and we'll get through April. And, um, and, yeah, and August if there's another primary, but we have to deal with the November situation because they're on the ballot. But we have the deputies. And they have the deputies, so, so they'll step up. Uh, but that's another thing that the state is looking at. And they know that all the towns have registers on the ballots, so they shouldn't really be in there.
It just swam towns. You could take the Gilford registrars and send the Madison ones over.
Really, Aunt Bruce?
They could.
You could drive the bus together. That's what he did.
So, um, but the early voting hours, right, from ten AM to six PM. For the presidential preference primary, all four days are ten to six. For a primary, if we have one in September, for those seven days, it's also ten to six with two days that are going to be eight to eight. And that's going to be the Tuesday and Thursday before the election. Same with the fourteen, fourteen days. So two of those days are going to be eight to, eight to eight.
And Sundays?
And weekends, Saturday and Sunday.
Woo!
Yeah. Um, and then, and again, one of the line items here, um, uh, is for custodial coverage over the weekends because the building will be open. The staff that will be here for early voting will not be in any way capable to deal with somebody having a problem in the restroom or lights out, whatever. So one of the things on here is that they, they really have to have custodial coverage on the weekends. So they have thought about, you know, about everything that I can think of. Um, that's in here. Um, they have discussed, um, but they have not heard back, um, specifics, but they have thought about the fact that they may need security um, at times. So that's here in the budget. Um, and again, this is just for early voting. Um, and again, this is just for early voting. Uh, the rest of their budget will remain the same for, um, you know.
Election Day.
Election Day.
That's a good question.
So all these additional budget requests, right, are things that in theory are variable costs, right? We could say no to, but doesn't it like we could say no to these?
You mean to say no to voters, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that doesn't seem like really a request.
That's the bottom line, right?
The record, I want everybody to vote, Scott, I don't want to say no to voting.
Pass to people voting, that's a good thing.
But I guess my point is it's not a request, it's a it's a call.
But I think we can also, as we go through the budget deleverations, how much do we wanna build into the budget considering it's an unknown, right? We might wanna say, hey, let's handle this, half of it appropriation wise, because it could be worse than this, right? Or it could be half of this depending on how things shake out. So we're more, so I think we have to decide what we're gonna actually put in the budget versus fund. We have to fund all, we have to fund whatever the need is, right?
And every year is different, right? So this year's special, we have the presidential preference primary, I get it, it's not in this particular budget, but it's there. Then you have another primary in September, maybe, maybe not. And then you have November, and then you have May, and anything in two. May's not early voting.
Yeah, so that's, uh.
I know.
I think I think I would be an advocate of of budgeting what is reasonably gonna be expected and then funding the overage without appropriation.
I agree. Yeah, I mean, we'll we'll have to go through and figure this out, you know.
I do think when you look at this, though, that the registrars, I know that they, I think they worked with, uh, with the finance department, and, um, and I think that they're they're very accurate with what they've asked for and reasonable. Um, you know, one of the things that was in here too was that they had asked for the stipends to return to cover, um, their additional costs, because those had been removed, but with them working all these additional hours and and for like town meetings, if it's over a certain amount, um, you know, they did ask for some some stipends on that.
I think I would also.
If we find that early voting isn't as popular as everybody thinks it might be, maybe we don't need the staffing level that we have, then we can scale that back.
And that, what I'm, I'm a little confused though, because what what is the required staffing if we're open? You're saying five people?
They're not, there's no hard and fast requirement, they don't say you need to have five people.
Okay, so that's what I think, really, that's where I'm like, you know, maybe, I mean, can you just have one person sitting in the registrar's office?
No, 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 so just just minimal. If you have somebody requesting curbside voting, two people have to go out, one from both parties, and you can't leave the room unattended, so the, just right off the bat, you need three people, minimal.
And it can't be these guys because they may be on the ballot.
Possibly, correct.
I'd like that you've rolled the extra janitorial expense into this budget as opposed to adding it to the existing facility budget. I would also say for police, if you're gonna be requesting police presence, that it all gets wrapped up in this and does not get assimilated into the normal operating budget of those departments.
I was trying to get facilities just to cover it for free, but that didn't work out.
You understand what I mean?
Yeah, they're both in here.
Yeah.
Um, but they don't, they don't show up in those departments that that we're drawing on them as a resource or not, like adding a resource to the to the operating line.
Well, we were talking though about, um, is there, you know, because we have custodial come in at different times anyway, so I was trying to understand, is this like an expectation that we just cover, it's gonna be two weekends a year or a year or three weekends a year that we have to add? Because sort of, do we need to really budget for that? Can that just be absorbed in the in the budget? But we, I am mised here to talk about that, so that's a discussion that we have about how we wanna cover it.
It seems like there should have been order, I mean, this is not a new concept, right? It's been in many other states for a very long time, so it's disheartening that there was not more direction given.
Maybe they did that when they voted for it, maybe.
Like, but I think we're also, we need, we have a fairly decentralized system. So they're trying to come, what's gonna work town by town, I mean, we, you know, we have a very decent, one hundred and sixty-nine places, so we don't have county, you know?
No.
So we're we're, that's where it does become problematic, and you have a small town, if you gotta have this, you could be twenty thousand, forty thousand, right, people, that base cost is gonna be there no matter how big your town is, so. Um, I think what was surprising was the length, I was like, fourteen days, I mean, so it's two weekends, I mean, that's a long time um, to have to cover, you know, and I know they had a lot of debate about it, but that was how it landed. I think a lot of people were expecting like seven days. Yeah, five or seven, um, so.
And then election days.
Yeah.
That's a sure thing.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see if it translates into higher participation.
Or burnout of the staff.
Well, that's the other thing, because you, you know, they'll be rotating for early voting, but then, right, they then you get, they get done with early voting, and then they have to work all day Monday to do everything they need to do to make sure the the
Polling locations are set up.
They have to do the logs, and then and then they're there from.
At like four AM, right?
You know, straight through, and then they're lucky if we all get out of here, especially on Election Day at midnight. So it's it's a lot on them. It's asking a lot.
In theory, the the traffic may be lower on Election Day, right, because.
You still have to process.
But you still have to be there.
Yeah, you have to do ballots.
And and the absentee, uh, balloting, uh, the counting of absentee and EV is, you know, that's gonna be enormous.
Yeah, but if you're treating it like a poll, you just start running them through on Election Day.
It's, you know what, the numbers that they're probably gonna look at is probably what we did in twenty twenty, you know? If we're combining our numbers, then that's probably what they're looking at, like it was in twenty twenty. But twenty twenty had COVID, so I think, so it might be a little lower, but maybe.
So what I learned is that. This isn't really an early voting system as much as it's an in-person absentee ballot filing system.
Yeah, all of that.
Because it won't be counted.
People are showing up physically to file an absentee ballot.
To to do it now in an envelope that will be counted on on Election Day, similar to an absentee ballot, correct? And everything else can be kept separate.
Well, and that's how this is, but unfortunately, the way the Constitution was set up, it requires this massive three to five year process to change the voting process, right? So they're kind of behind.
Yeah.
That's why the, you know, it would have been in retrospect, having gone through COVID, to do the absentee ballot thing first, right? And just have no excuse absentee ballot and never go to early voting. But the way the timing worked out and then COVID hit, it, you know, because no one voted absentee before until COVID. And it was very small numbers, you know?
We did.
They did, but it was not anywhere near what people did during COVID.
Well, not during twenty twenty, no.
Yeah.
That was, but, um, so we we're sort of, we're gonna have to see how this works out.
Yeah, it's it's.
And and we have to be just, and we have to be prepared for it, because we don't know which way it'll go.
Right.
So we're we're covering all bases.
Well, I think public education is gonna be critical, absolutely. Um, and, um, I wanna say the registrars and the town department are putting as much thought and detail into the proposal.
Yes, I think, yes.
You know, that's what we do, it's our jobs. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the finance department, especially Chris, Chris is always super helpful, so.
Stacy, not so much.
Hi, guys, thank you.
Good night.
See ya.
It's not always roses. It's like sisters.
Hi, Scott. That's for last.
Hi, Scott. You gotta put the worst family.
Yeah, we gotta, or put Madison, 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 next year, we all do Madison.
How about A Madison?
A Madison.
Well, Paige.
Um, one thirty-eight.
Thank you, dear.
Oh.
So, um, so hi, everybody.
He's been sitting so long.
And ten minutes after, you all just ate pizza, so that's really great. And I don't have a baby.
Honey?
Not one with me.
You have Andrea.
I have, I have two of the best board members, Dave Buller, who's the chair of our board, and Andre Eric, who is the all, you know, the all. Um, and they're here to to support, uh, myself and the department. And so I I do have a PowerPoint presentation, it's very short, I assure you, um, it helps kinda keep me organized and on track. I actually have a very, what I think is a relatively small additional request that I I need to make of you, and my concern is really just, really two major concerns as to why I'm approaching this conversation like this. One is that when it comes to youth and family services, we're a bit of an oddball as a town department, so not everybody always understands exactly why we're doing or what we're doing. Um, so it's always, I feel, my responsibility to help kinda walk people through exactly what we're doing, the value of it. Um, the other part is that since it is a relatively small additional request, I'm just afraid, particularly in this kind of budget environment that we're in this year, that it could look like some some low hanging fruit and without really understanding what what this little bit of money means to us, uh, you might make a a decision that would have a much bigger implication for for our department, for how we run. So, um, but we're adults, so I'll just walk you through things, okay? Uh, so that's our tiny little building, um, we have three major divisions under Youth and Family Services, positive youth development, uh, that's all of our prevention work, our clinical services, we run mass social services out of our department, uh, with that is encompassed of what we call community support, so that includes our social services, but we also run our drug and alcohol coalition under community support. What we do is defined in state statute, so we're known as a youth service bureau. Uh, as far as the state started defining these, um, to create some concept around them and structure way back in the nineteen seventies, essentially, um, as we fall under this statute and operate under this statute, um, we are, uh, we are charged with being, uh, responsible for assessing the needs of our community and essentially being the hub, we're sort of the operating hub, we're supposed to know what's going on as relates to youth and families. And it's not that we have to meet every single need, our responsibility is to understand what those needs are and then to work towards meeting them, whether it's there's stuff that we're doing or it's stuff that we're collaborating with other people in the community or other agencies in the community. Uh, and we're one of a hundred and two Y S Bs across the state. Um, in terms of a few of our budget highlights, we've kept a level, at least that's what we're presenting with so far, a level operational budget. Uh, we've worked really hard just to reallocate things, uh, between accounts. We have a single additional request that's, um, connected to our parents' support counseling position, that's one of our clinical positions. Um, and just so you know, like, we do pay very close attention to everything that we're doing in terms of our funding. So like, it is important to us to track the grants that we are, um, applying for, the grants that we have and we're managing. Uh, the two areas that we really focus on nowadays that we have maybe a little bit more, I wanna say, influence over, our our clinical revenue, which is based on what we make out of our counseling services, and believe it or not, our social services. And I'll explain more about that in a minute. I wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of what we're doing in terms of helping offset our costs. So, um, this is a short list, and I just took, um, last fiscal year as an example, so so you'd have, you know, the full year as as, you know, to understand. But our clinical revenue, uh, for all of last fiscal year was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, and I'll show you another slide in terms of how that's been going up incrementally. We have, because of, we operate under the state statute, we get a a main grant that's a matching grant from the state, uh, that gets applied to offset salary of our, a salary within our department. Um, that enhancement grant, state supplement, that's, uh, close to eighteen thousand dollars. That money has to be spent on providing some direct program or service. And in our case, we spend that money on contractual staff that do counseling for us. That little workforce alliance, that's a larger grant, um, that we use to spend towards our summer youth employment program, that that little bit of money is what we get to administer that particular grant. The scope grant, um, that is connected to our additional request, and I'll show you more about that. That's a state grant that we've been getting forever. Uh, the scope grant is actually administered through the school system, so they get a larger chunk, and we get approximately fifty thousand dollars to do the parents' support counseling. And we have made, that's our drug and alcohol coalition, stop grant, that's an alcohol prevention grant. We're in our third year of that, it's actually a three-year grant, um, and a small local prevention grant. And those two funds we use towards, uh, substantive youth prevention. That's a lot of programming that goes to directly into, uh, the youth in school and the community. But essentially, if you add all this up, it's about twenty-seven percent of, uh, of what was our operating budget in, um, twenty twenty-three. Uh, also to point out, in terms of social services, we have worked in terms of partnering with community charitable organizations. This is something we've been building and building over many, many years. So in twenty twenty-three, we moved, facilitated seventy-five thousand dollars from charitable organizations and and funneled that directly to programs that helped with heating assistance, emergency housing, food insecurity. So that's the charity, the generosity of Madison, that is really trusting us and our social services to properly administer that money, get it to people who really need it. So big, the biggest, um, uh, charitable organization is Neighbor to Neighbor, but not to overlook Madison J C's and the Exchange Club, those two other, um, uh, local, uh, organizations that have given very generously, uh, for us. This is a a slide of our clinic revenue, so that this top bar, we have, in our clinic, what we refer to as our outpatient clinic clients. These are people that are, kids that are are seeking services in in a traditional outpatient mental health, uh, capacity. So what you have on this top, this is the number of, uh, clients that we've had in our clinical services, and this bottom, this green line, is our clinic revenue. So what is important to to point out here, where we were not as good in terms of collecting the revenue, um, we've now really narrowed this gap. So where we have about the same amount of clinic clients that we're able to manage, our revenue has continued to go up. And that's because of how we're 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 running our clinic, um, and I'll go into more of that, uh, in a minute. If I had just one more year, this line is gonna, uh, is going to increase over this line. So we are well ahead in this year on our clinic revenue, um, so for, like, last year, all of last year, we made a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, as of this date, we're just about at a hundred thousand dollars in terms of our clinic revenue. And I'll explain more why in a second.
So get, just.
Go ahead.
If you go back to the slide, so you've got two lines crossing, but they're on two different scales.
Yes.
So their crossing isn't necessarily.
Well, it what it, what I hope it shows to you is that where, um, where where we're basically providing, you know, the same amount of of service to the same amount of clients, we're now increasing the amount of revenue that we're making.
Clearly, your trend does say that, right?
Yes.
Your trend, your trend says that, I think if you wanted to talk about the crossing, you might do, uh, um, dollars of revenue per client served, um, but it it clearly shows that you're getting better at capturing as much of the available revenues, I'm I'm assuming that's state money?
No, that's.
Insurance of all types?
That's insurance and our fee scale. And we don't, and we still are open, we will work with any fair in any situation so we can provide the service without, um, you know, making it impossible or harder for them to pay for their service.
And when you have a client that is on Husky or private insurance, you're able to collect up the s- the same professional fee that a private provider does.
Correct.
So there's no, we're not discounting that at all.
Nope.
How many client visits does that, do those?
So I could get you a session number, so we we have electronic records, and I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head. Um, but if you want, I'm happy to talk to you offline and I can give you numbers on sessions.
Might make your numbers look even better.
Yeah.
On the on the revenue side, you know, comparing it to the revenue.
Yeah, yeah.
So to to Bruce's point, so that's roughly around eleven hundred dollars per person per year, based on what you're showing us.
With that, yes, yeah, so that was a hundred. So that was a hundred, and I think that that represented a hundred and fourteen clients that we served on that chart.
So that's probably ten to fifteen visits per, on average?
I wouldn't want even, because it's all different, you know, you, we may have, within that number, you could have, uh, somebody where we saw it two or three times and somebody we saw.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking averages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, off the top of my head, give you a a competent average. Um, so I, uh, if, uh, just to move on, the additional, so this is just our our organizational chart, so you can have an idea of how our 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 organized. This is our clinic. Our additional request is for our Parents' Support Counseling position. Um, in terms of what we're doing differently that helps us grow our revenue is actually right here. So we have these two boxes and they represent, one is our our contractual staff. So we have four part-time contractual clinicians that do get paid off that grant and some town money, as well as, um, this year, we have six interns that we have working with us. Um, so to understand, having basically low cost and and interns who are essentially free, we're able to provide more services, so we have more slots, more bodies to do the work without, uh, incurring a huge additional cost to the town. Um, and we, uh, we're able to do this largely because we've got a great assistant director for our clinic who, uh, is in charge of all this and oversees it, as well as our, um, that's Angela Hearn, as well as our office manager, Sharon Clark, who kind of is the glue for all of us. What is also important to point out, that in order to have this many contractual staff and this many interns, you have to tie each, specifically each intern, to having somebody who's supervising them. And that's a lot of burden to put on just one or two people. So we do have, for example, Erin Corbett, who's our, one of our school-based clinicians. Um, and so last year, she had responsibility throughout the year for about four interns, not all at the same time, but. So Erin, in terms of her work, uh, she has a small outpatient counseling, uh, caseload. Her revenue was about seven thousand dollars just for the work that she, that was done under, directly to her. But when you have four interns, then you have, uh, she had anywhere from another twenty to thirty clients that were served. And that equated to about another forty thousand dollars in in terms of revenue. So it's helping us, and just to point this out, the niche, it gets us more bodies, more spots, more people served in this way, and it also helps us in terms of collecting the third-party revenue and the fees to offset the cost. I can't, I, you probably all know, but we are still in a mental health crisis. We are still getting, uh, a a lot of calls and a lot more complicated cases and number of cases than we've had. Um, well, I'm very proud to say, and again, this is credit to how the clinic is running, we don't have a waiting list now. A year ago, I would have, standing here, I would have told you, we probably had anywhere from like ten to fifteen families on the waiting list. So as we've been able to use more interns and more contractual, you know, have a waiting list now. Um, we're increasing the revenue and we're meeting the need. Matt, did you have a question?
Two questions, um, with intern billing, are they, it's it's the same amount, is the billing going for the supervisor?
Yeah. Yes, it gets billed through the license of the supervisor.
Okay. Who does your billing?
And that's, that's our office manager, Sharon.
Okay, so it's all in-house?
Yeah, all in-house, in a capacity that we've built over time.
Right.
So, Parents' Support Counselor, it's important for you to know, this is somebody who's a master's level, it's a licensed person or a licensed eligible. Uh, this is somebody who's trained for early childhood development and within family systems. Um, they specialize in parenting and family therapy. This is key to understand that anything that's happening in the office in terms of therapy for a young child, you also need to help the parent, as well as in some cases, the school, to understand like what you're doing and why. Um, it's one of the reasons why you don't have a lot of early childhood therapists out in the community. We're picking up this need because it's very hard, uh, in terms of like clinical work, to work, or I should say, more complicated to work with younger children. You have to understand play therapy, you have to be able to speak and interact and engage with a child around the therapy, and then you need to be able to talk to an adult who's a parent, help them understand. So it's, it tends to be more time-intensive, more case management needy, and so it's not, not as simple as as maybe as working with an adult. Um, and as a result, about half of the family therapy sessions, uh, that we've provided just in this year, um, it's about three hundred and forty-two family therapy sessions that we've counted, half of them are provided through our Parents' Support Counselor. Um, and just in general, this person provides, and also can provide individual therapy, groups, case management, advocacy, coordination with school. And I now need to describe you what that Scope Grant is. So that fifteen thousand dollar grant, it's administered to the school, it's called the Scope Grant. The Scope is an, is an acronym. Um, this is a, um, a collaborative model, so you have, uh, Liz Pataglia, who is the special director for the town, uh, for the Madison Public School System, uh, a elementary school social worker, a s- a nurse, a pediatrician, happens to be Dr. John Stein. Um, uh, they form what we refer to as the, uh, the Scope Team, that includes also our Parents' Support Counselor. When there is a, um, elementary-age student who is, um, showing anything in terms of a social, emotional, difficult or or behavioral issue with the school, um, the school can offer to a parent a Parents' Support Counselor. What this means is that you have somebody who can, on a voluntary basis, it's all a voluntary program, can work with the parent, can can assess the child, can work with the parent, the school team, get a better understanding of what's going on for that child, and then work in a very comprehensive way to help that child. So what we have, especially since the pandemic, is a lot more kids who have, um, what we refer to as mood, uh, dysregulation, um, for lots of different reasons, and I won't go into details, but much, many more kids now, younger kids, who who don't know how to quite manage themselves in certain environments, um, which is very stressful to parents, it's very stressful to the kids, it's very stressful to the school. So the Scope Program is our Parents' Support Counselor. Um, utilize a very comprehensive model to understand the student and provide services. Uh, the Scope Grant, as it's fifteen thousand dollars, is only a chunk of that position, but what we do is we, under that Scope Program, we don't charge parents separately, so like, they're not getting charged from their insurance and also on the grant. The grant covers the assessment as well as, uh, what are typically four to eight sessions or so of of treatment under the grant. And the grant, we've had forever. Does that make sense to everybody? All right, so, um, if you want to go ahead, just, we'll fill in the rest of this slide. Um, so just a, an idea, uh, these are kind of the five areas in which the Parents' Support Counselor functions. Uh, this, you could expect about twenty to twenty-five Scope cases that I just described, go ahead, Jean. Moving this from part-time to full-time allows us to also use this as an individual therapist and still do family work and then bill for that. So the additional hours that we are able to do making this full-time allows that person to also carry about fifteen to ten to fifteen cases in a, uh, in a fiscal year. Um, this person can also, at full-time, be better, uh, better situated to to provide some groups. So there's a couple of groups this year that that our Parents' Support Counselor has done. One is, uh, referred to as Moms on the Move. This is a, a group of moms with, uh, very young children that are, it's a walking group. It's been, uh, been pretty effective and and well-received. The other one is, um, a series of, uh, youth social skills, these are what we're referred to as Zones of Reg- Regulation. Um, and this is a model that the school uses. So we run these programs and use the consistent curriculum that the school is using, so it helps the kids who uh, are in those groups to understand what what we're trying to do with them. Uh, and you can click one more time. So this person is also an expert on, um, an an early childhood, as well as a member of our team, so they can consult with parents, they can consult with schools and pediatricians, as well as help us as a staff, bring their expertise and supports, and sort of, it helps all of us. Go ahead. So how we got here, and this is really critical, we had the same Parents' Support Counselor since like nineteen ninety-five. Uh, that was Marge Adler, so this position, at the time when we had this grant, so it was a twenty-nine-hour-a-week position. So and imagine you all know that at twenty-nine hours, it's just an hour short of full-time. So Marge was with us for twenty years, and she's kind of like an icon, she's a fantastic, fantastic person. And she, she probably worked about forty hours a week and and didn't care about what she got paid for. This was a passion for her. So I, we, you know, I think didn't quite, not that we took her for granted, but I think, so when she left, the position had really, was really much bigger than, um, than we could sustain based on the funding. So as I said, it's a pretty comprehensive, complex job, um, that was essentially drastically, uh, underpaid, and there was no other benefits to it, it wasn't full-time, so you couldn't really recruit and retain people because it was a better position. So and from two thousand sixteen up until about two thousand twenty, we had three people who funneled in and out of that position. And just so you know, in order for us to maintain the grant, we still had to provide this position. So then we had to, we had to cobble together, we took Marge out of retirement a couple times, we had to cobble together from other staff people, which took them away from other clinic cases, so it had a ripple effect. Um, where we couldn't maintain the position, we then had to pull internally for resources to fill it. And if we didn't, we would have lost the grant, which also is, you know, helpful to the position overall. Made a request in twenty twenty, um, just a few ticks before the whole world went crap. And, um, we were, at that time, the request was deferred and in lieu of a a larger study that was supposed to be done on our, our agency and our clinic. And just the short of that is that it was completed and they did actually support as a part of the question, this position becoming full-time. Uh, and I have the report, we can share it with people. Um, we're not able to get it back to you and back in, you know, with, for consideration to the budget, so we made use of, uh, ARPA funding. Uh, that was fun to request for a position that you knew you were still gonna have to come back to and ask for town funding later on. Uh, but we did get ARPA funding, so this position has actually been full-time for the last, basically, last two years. Um, we didn't always have it filled, that didn't happen until last February. Um, but we've had this position going full-time, so we have really good, um, a good indication now of what it can do and and how we can fund it. Um, so, and last February, Marissa Sarah is is our Parents' Support Counselor, she's phenomenal, and we really want to keep her. Uh, we really think she'll bring quite a bit of stability, uh, to our department, share what he is. Um, and here's why I'm here, so in twenty twenty-four, the ARPA money that we had runs out. So, um, in terms of the next fiscal year, we can pay the differential to make this full-time and maintain it with ARPA funding until January of twenty, yeah, January twenty twenty-five, and then the last half of the fiscal year, and you can move ahead. Um, we need a grand total of six thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. So that's, that's the request. So to be clear, it's the salary differential, makes it part-time to full-time, um, and is the remaining ARPA funding, uh, to help us. And it transitioned, the nice thing about, if we are able to do this this year, it transitions nicely into the budget. Um, if I had to ask for the full amount, I'd be asking for twelve thousand dollars, which obviously is a bigger hit. This allows us to come off of ARPA funding, and I I just feel like it's a little smoother going in. Um, we also can show that we have the Scope Grant still tied to this position. Um, and based on real numbers, we know that a minimum, this position with the additional outpatient, um, revenue that it can generate, is gonna bring in about twenty thousand dollars a year. And I, I, trust me when I say that that's a minimum. Um, that allows us to increase it, and as I said, it was supported by that study, and you can go ahead twice. So in terms of, in terms of the cost right now, this revenue is about fifty-five percent of what the town is paying for the position as it's funded in the book next year. So we can show you a half, oh, over half, uh, of an offset. We can also look and, click one more time, we can also look at this position looking to the future. So I'm aware from from Liz that we have an opportunity to request more money from the Scope Grant. Now, it's a little tricky because what I'd be doing is saying, we're going to increase this to full-time. However, if I'm not sure that you're gonna approve this being full-time, I don't know how I'm gonna say that. So I have to work with Liz, and I think that we can put in a request for about five thousand dollars to add to that number. The other thing we can think about when, once Marissa is fully licensed, is Marissa, um, is able to take an intern, uh, which I would suspect at some point that she will, you can look at that, again, like the same way we did with our other staff, can now generate more client spots and more revenue, um, to to bring to the table. And people have any questions about any of that?
So if I read this correctly, with a high confidence level that you could get the grant, you're really asking for thirteen hundred dollars.
Well, it's a full-year position, so I'm not sure how you want to parse it out.
Well, and and, according to Matthew, you're asking for sixty-three hundred dollars.
I don't know that I'm gonna, I don't know that I'm gonna get this, so I'm telling you, I'm gonna ask and and make, and see if we can get the request in. I don't want to make a promise, Bruce, that I, I don't know.
Okay.
This just came up this week. I feel good about it, but I can't promise you. Um, but.
Just so I understand though, so sixty-three hundred is a roll-off, but there's another sixty-three hundred in the next year that we can see?
So this, so this is a.
Only twelve thousand dollars, a half of that is being covered by ARPA right now, right?
And, and yeah, next budget year, yeah.
Yeah, the bill really comes to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
And that, and it's in there full-time. And my hope is that we can grow the position and continue to grow the revenue to help continue to offset the cost of town. That's the idea.
And Scott, unfortunately, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, because now all of the kids that were born during COVID are three and four years old, and and they, in their formative, you know, bonding years, were surrounded by masks, not seeing words, not seeing expression, not, and I know in my work, we're seeing a lot of that age group really struggling, um, socially and emotionally, so.
And and it's interesting, because you you see a, you see an impact of the pandemic for where, when, for where it impacted the kid at that stage of development. So you're seeing impacts largely across, like, um, you know, for how current freshmen and current sophomores and juniors, and you can kind of go back to their stage of development where they were at the time of the pandemic, and you can see, um, more obvious sort of population-wide impacts.
My freshman in college now, so that's a bit more, I mean, socially, I'm more like a sophomore. Yeah, so you definitely see it, fascinating, that's it.
All right, we're almost there, everybody, I promise. Um, this is just, again, another depiction of of what we're dealing with in terms of referrals. So, uh, the blue is, um, of client inquiries, that's ten and younger. And this orange is from, uh, ages eleven to fourteen. Um, and then these are older, older, like, older, children that are older, that I refer, sorry. Um, just to kind of give, if if I had this chart, say, maybe ten years ago, would have been flipped. We almost provided exclusively, uh, treatment and services to teenagers and middle school and teenager and up. We're now in the reverse. Um, and that's been the, um, that that's, as you can see, that's been the trend, particularly around going in and out of the pandemic. And even this is a half-year this year. Um, we're almost, the vast majority of our places are now, uh, kids under ten. Um, there's a lot of studies and a lot of support for early intervention, so I just, I threw some things on here that we found in terms of all research, uh, you know, it it really just emphasizing the importance of more comprehensive outreach and early intervention to children and, um, the importance of a more of a collaborative, uh, approach to, uh, early intervention. Um, and pointing out, according to, I think we got this from the CDC, about twenty seven, twenty percent of children who need services actually receive services. So we are, you have to understand that when kids are are acting out, um, it's not always understood in terms of its mental health, uh, or what maybe is perhaps going on for that child. Um, and, you know, for lots of different reasons and factors, sometimes kids don't get help. And there's a huge cost to that, when you think about, um, what happens to a child with unmet, unmet health, mental health needs. So now you're having potentially more crisis interventions of things that are needed. Um, the more, uh, staffing resources that are required by school, the potential risk for suicide, self-injury, lots of things. So where you don't identify and meet a mental health need, you often have a greater risk for a lot of other things that that cost money, that wind up costing us all a great deal of money. Uh, and there's a, there's quite a bit of research now, uh, that can actually connect what maybe a, a dollar spent on early intervention and prevention, and for what it then may co- may save you down the line. Depending on what the program is, it could be anything from where, like, you spend a dollar on early intervention, you may be saving. you may be saving five, six, seven dollars for, for other costs. And I can explain more about that, but I know everybody's tired, so I don't want to. What's really important is in terms of the, those interventions are very specific and targeted. So if you are, for in our case, we are trying to intervene with kids at a point where we can get them and create more of a collaboration rather than kids who maybe have unmet needs, wind up parents having to be more adversarial, either with the school system or other systems, which costs money and time and, and lots of energy. So to wrap up, you can click forward two things. So our part-time parents for counselor, we've got the same capacity to do the scope work, but more limited outpatient caseload, limited groups and potential for turnover and more of a, a, a limit towards what we can bring back in offsets. The capacity for, for a full-time, the capacity for scope is still there, but we can have a higher patient, outpatient caseload, capacity for groups, overall stability and more potential for development and thirty-five thousand dollars or more in terms of offsets. I feel like a salesman. And this is my shameless plug, we're going to be doing a state of the youth address on February first. This is our presentation of the high school survey data, which is, is also very interesting, as it always is. So with that, I'll just shut up if you guys have any questions.
Well, it was pretty comprehensive. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you for such a wonderful presentation. And, and both of you for coming here and spending the past three hours.
They just get free pizza.
So I do have a question. And my, my background is hospital finances and we're all about values and there's no margin, there's no mission. So you showed, you showed a graph that showed kids or children or people served and then the revenues, and you're showing how the lines are converging on them. Do you feel there's more opportunity to offset, because revenue, because this is, your budget's almost a million dollars, right? And then great offsets, but are there opportunities for better billing? Because you're showing proof of it.
So I mean, we, we can bill for our clinical services, the, the things that I didn't talk in any real detail about our prevention. All largely our prevention services. So there's, we're, we've looked at things in terms of what we could bill for our, our school-based counselors. So that's an area that we can explore. We're very open to whatever we can find and then streamlining and being as efficient as possible. So we're trying that. We are absolutely trying. We, we, we understand the cost of these things, but we also understand the value of what we're doing and the prevention work that we're doing. And I, I could spend another half an hour talking about that in terms of its effectiveness and what we're able to do, what we're able to reach. And God forbid what would happen if, if we're not doing that work, because nobody else is. All right, on that note. But I do appreciate all your time and I know that that was lengthy and just hope you'll consider our additional classes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, I don't know if we can get attendees. We lost our, our home-based attendees. Attendees again. So, well, Jeanie, no one, if, if you were a attendee, I know Jen is on there, but no hands are, I guess she dropped off, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. We're going to be ending today, so we have another one on Monday, so.